Everybody, I'm going to call to order the workshop of April 12th, 2021. And at this time, I'll call upon Ms. Kristen Rush to call the role.
Mayor Williams? Mayor Clinton Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
And I'll ask for Councilmember Jones, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's workshop.
The motion is to excuse Mayor Williams. All members of council have voted. Nancy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Alright, Mayor Williams is excused unanimously. And we have our first workshop up this evening. I'm sorry if my council packet is frozen. So Mr. Devon, I'll call upon you to introduce the workshop.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council, we are going to present to you tonight the City of Arvada's Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. And I'm going to ask Facilities Manager Kim Baker, who oversaw this engagement with our consultant, who did a very fine job to introduce this item.
Can we start the slide? Joe? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and city staff. I'm Kim Baker, I'm the manager of city facilities. I'm also the ADA coordinator for the city. Tonight, we're presenting the Americans with Disability Act, the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Two years ago, we partnered with Meeting the Challenge to develop the ADA plans required by the adoption of the ADA Act of 1990. MTC, Meeting the Challenge MTC has completed their extensive comprehensive evaluation of the ADA compliance in our facilities, our parks, and our public right of ways that include sidewalks, curb ramps, and crosswalks. Also included in the evaluation are service programs, ADA policies, and procedures. In March of this year, after numerous public outreach efforts by our communications team, we conducted two ADA-required public engagement meetings to present our draft transition plan for comments. The first meeting was remote with limited attendance, and the second meeting was in person with no attendance. The communication team also launched a survey through Speak Up Arvada that yielded 26 responses with the summary results that will be presented later in the presentation. So next slide. And then next slide, sorry. So introductions, pleased to introduce the project team. From our facilities division, and seated right here is Patty Carrico. Patty is our project manager and played a key role in the facilitation, coordination, and communication for this project. Our presenter tonight remotely is Dana Barton. Dana serves as the lead on the project and is the director of Meeting the Challenge. And our subject matter expert tonight is Jeff Ames. Jeff is a senior project manager with MTC and has a wealth of ADA compliance knowledge. And then next slide. And now I'll turn it over to Dana Barton for the presentation.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, council members. As Kim said, my name is Dana Barton and I'm the director of Meeting the Challenge. We are located in Colorado Springs, just down the road from you all. And really what we do are accessibility audits and disability compliance consulting. And we've worked with over 30 Title II organizations on their self-evaluation and transition plans in Colorado. We also operate the Rocky Mountain ADA Center, which is one of 10 federally funded centers in the United States that provides information, training, and guidance on the ADA. And our parent company is CPNY, a full-service civil engineering firm. Next slide, please. I wanted to start the workshop this evening by kind of breaking down what is the Americans with Disabilities Act. So the ADA guarantees equal opportunity for individuals with disabilities in public accommodations, in employment, transportation, state and local government services, and telecommunications. And it's divided into five titles or sections that relate to different areas of public life. As it relates to the City of Arvada, under Title II, the ADA prohibits discrimination against qualified individuals with disabilities in all of your programs, activities, and services. It applies to the whole local government, all of your departments and any agencies. And Title II of the ADA outlines the administrative processes to be followed, and that includes this requirement for a self-evaluation and subsequent transition plan. It outlines that you need to make reasonable modifications to your policies, practices, and procedures when necessary to avoid discrimination. It requires that architectural barriers are identified and that you will provide effective communication for people with hearing, vision, or speech disabilities. The title is regulated and enforced by the U.S. Department of Justice. Next slide, please. So the Title II regulations do not include any affirmative requirement to update a transition plan, and the transition plan for Title II entities should have been developed in 1992. So there are no requirements to update the transition plan or to develop a new transition plan at specific intervals. However, it does say that there is an ongoing compliance with the ADA that's required. And so, as a city, Arvada has committed to the development of this transition plan to ensure that your programs, when viewed in their entirety, are accessible to and usable by qualified people of all abilities. And we know that it's, the city has taken many actions. You've created new programs, you've moved programs to different locations. Since 1992, you've built new structures, you've made alterations to your existing structures. And this is, you know, the normal course of community growth. And that is why it's important to have this ongoing updating of the transition plan. Next slide, please. So the self-evaluation and transition plan are really here to establish procedures for the city to complete this ongoing assessment of your compliance with the ADA's obligation to ensure that all programs are readily accessible to and usable by people with disabilities. And you'll hear me say that a lot, that you need to be sure that your programs and services are accessible to and usable by people with disabilities. We've identified barriers to any programs, activities, and services through the self-evaluation, that's really what it is. And through this process, we've identified strategies to remove barriers, to prioritize barrier removal, and also provide a timeline for implementation. And these are all requirements for the self-evaluation and transition plan. Next slide, please. I think it's important to mention also within Title II, it is required that any public entity that employs 50 or more persons needs to designate at least one employee to coordinate its efforts to comply with and carry out responsibilities under the ADA. And this is the ADA coordinator. Right now, Mr. Baker is holding that role. One of our recommendations is for you to have a full-time ADA coordinator to carry out this plan. As you'll see, as we continue to move forward, it's a very comprehensive plan and has a lot of moving parts that really could take up a full-time job. The ADA coordinator needs to really have the time and expertise to coordinate your efforts to comply with the ADA and make sure that this transition plan that we've put together is moving forward. They need to be able to network within your city, have the right resources for support, they've got to build relationships. Sometimes this work can be daunting and tough, and they've got to get the whole city behind them. And so, one of our recommendations, as I've mentioned, is a full-time ADA coordinator. Next plan, please, or next slide. And now I want to outline the self-evaluation process that Meeting the Challenge went through to assist the city. So the first thing we did was reviewed all of your policies and procedures to ensure compliance with the Title II administrative requirements. And following that, we collected data of your physical locations, 25 facilities, 113 outdoor recreation facilities, and 796 miles of public sidewalk, which includes 10,874 curb ramps. Once that data was collected, it was analyzed by our accessibility analysts for compliance. And we were able to identify areas that were out of compliance and then provide the city with what needs to be done to bring these things into compliance. And we also provided opinions of probable construction costs. From there, we assisted the city in prioritizing how these barriers would be removed based on the use of the facilities by the public. And we also aligned that with the public right-of-way improvements based on your current plan for streets improvement. And that is what we used to draft the transition plan that we shared with the public, the draft transition plan. And from there, we took the input from the public, determined if we needed to adjust any priorities, and now we're presenting you with the final transition plan. Next slide, please. So the self-evaluation requirements are that you need to evaluate your current services, policies, and practices to determine if they meet the requirements of the ADA. You need to provide that opportunity to interested people, people with disabilities and organizations that represent them, to take part in the self-evaluation process by submitting comments, and you've done that. And then the self-evaluation must be maintained on file and made available to the public in the future, should there be a request for that. Let's see, next slide, please. I mentioned, I've mentioned a couple of times, that we reviewed policies. There's over a dozen policies that, a few that are required, and several others that we recommend are looked at and made sure that they're inclusive for people with disabilities. And through our talks with the city, we know that two new policies will be forthcoming for your review, a Title II ADA umbrella policy that really encompasses that dozen or more policies that we talked about, and then Title II ADA accessibility, effective communications, and service animals policy as well. And with that, it's great to have policies, but of course, we need the people who are going to be carrying these things out, your staff, to understand what the policies say. And so, there will be staff training on the new policies, but also, we've delivered three trainings to be available on your LMS, online trainings that are self-paced on disability awareness and etiquette, effective communication, and then a Title II overview. And those will be available for all of your employees at the city. We've also made recommendations for targeted specific training for different departments. So for example, the 2010 ADA standards that give the technical and scoping requirements for, you know, a reach range would be very important for, say, your facility staff, but maybe not as important for lifeguards for the summer. And understanding about a service animal and what questions you can ask would be very important for people who sit at the front desk versus maybe someone who's in an accounting office and doesn't interact with the public. So we've divided up those trainings and given suggestions based on the roles that your staff has. Next slide, please. In the transition plan, there are four things that are required, and these are laid out. The first is to identify architectural barriers that limit accessibility in the public entity's facilities and any of your facilities. The second is to describe in detail the methods that will be used to make your facility accessible, so how are you going to remediate those? And then the third, to specify the schedule for taking necessary steps to achieve compliance. And the fourth is to indicate the official responsible for implementation of the plan. At this point, as ADA coordinator, Kim has been identified as that person. And we will get into the timeline for barrier removal as we continue throughout this presentation. Alright, next slide, please. So, I want to start by talking about how we assess the barriers in facilities and parks. We identify barriers as any attribute of an element or a feature of a facility that doesn't adhere to the scoping or technical provisions of the 2010 ADA standards for accessible design. And then we prioritize these barriers and look at where they exist, these barriers, where they exist in rooms or spaces, and we determine is the public allowed free rein of that area? Are they supervised or monitored by a staff member? And if there isn't someone, a staff member there, to supervise or to maybe walk someone through an area, those areas where the public is what we call unsupervised, those barriers have the highest priority for mitigation. It's also important to note that when structural barrier removal isn't feasible, a short-term option or mitigation of the barrier needs to be accomplished through a different method or means. I said something earlier about we're looking at all of your programs when viewed in their entirety. So maybe a case where a door to a conference room is not the right width, but you're able to hold a meeting in a different conference room where the doorway is wide enough for a person who may use a wheelchair. So you can use a different or alternative methods or means to make that program or service that you're offering accessible to a person with a disability.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Councilmember Marriott has a question?
Sure. Thank you. Dana, I had just a quick question for you about, you just mentioned in your last little bit about it's barriers that prevent the public to access the services, programs, and activities when viewed in their entirety. But does the ADA, if I'm not mistaken, should apply to the team members at the City of Arvada as well? Or is that a different section of the ADA code? Or is that addressed differently? Or are they all encompassed in one spot?
That's a great question. And the answer is that falls under Title I of the ADA. And so...
And is that the part that affects every employer? Is that...
That's correct, yeah.
Right, okay. So the city has a couple of roles here.
Yeah, the language is often confusing in terms of an employee would ask for an accommodation, a reasonable accommodation, to be able to perform their work, whereas the public is asking for a reasonable modification of whatever your everyday procedure is. And so, as an employer, under Title I, you're going to look at that accommodation request. So maybe it's a different office location for an individual. Maybe the request is that the individual is able to bring a service animal or an emotional support animal. Maybe it's a hybrid schedule to work remotely, as we've done so often in these recent times. And that is looked at under a different title in the ADA. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Keep the questions coming.
Dana, I have a question.
Great.
One of the things that, so this is in relation to number two, barriers that were created by new construction. How do we prevent this from moving forward? How do we make sure that our new construction will not have issues with the facility? Because one of the things that I found curious when I looked at some of the issues were with some of our newer buildings, like the Westwoods Golf House, the Arvada Police Westwoods. There were some issues with the Arvada Tennis Center. All of these have been built fairly recently, and yet there were problems found. So how do we, as a city, you know, where is that found in our policymaking?
That's a great question. Well, I'll mention it a little bit later, but let me jump to the point right now. It's very important that you have established policies for your contractors and for construction to make sure that there is an ADA review. Unfortunately, a building inspector is not going to, in the state of Colorado, they're not required to check an ADA box. And so, we've been speaking with Kim and his team about updating your engineering criteria manual so that it outlines what the specifications are that the City of Arvada will accept moving forward. Our team works with many architects on plan review and looking at the drawings from concept all the way, you know, through the design phases to make sure that things are being designed with compliance in mind. And I also, I think it's really important to mention the training aspect again. And my little go-to example for this is my father was in the hospital and on the ICU floor, and there were two public restrooms, unisex restrooms, that were both accessible restrooms. But next to the toilet, the housekeeping staff had put the trash can. And that trash can would prevent an individual who needed to transfer from a wheelchair onto the toilet to be able to use that restroom. So I moved the trash can because I walk into restrooms now, that's all I see, or all the things. I come back the next day, it's in the wrong place. So my husband works at the hospital, so I was on my husband. You can design things beautifully. You can construct them beautifully. But if you're not training your staff to be aware of where something as simple as a trash can might go, we're not ever going to see that in the plans. You're not going to see that in the plans. So the training of your entire staff and getting all of the City of Arvada staff behind this and to be champions for the ADA is so important as well. Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Okay, next slide, please. So I mentioned we assessed 26 buildings, and it looks like you all have read through a lot of this information and looked at the facilities that were assessed. So I'm not going to read them aloud to you unless I get a request to do that. But it's a lot of buildings. Next slide, please. And you can see in this next, our summary findings. When we looked at, excuse me, when we looked at the mitigation difficulty, how tough is it going to be to fix some of these things? A lot of things came up in the low mitigation and then the high mitigation. The moderate level was kind of in between. So we did have a lot that probably can be done with general maintenance. And I want to give you some examples of that in photographs. So next slide, please. Overall, I'm so sorry, we collected 7,800 attributes in your city buildings and 8,110 in your city golf courses and your parks. And then each of those attributes was assessed for compliance with the 2010 ADA standards for accessible design. And any of those that were out of compliance, we call findings. So you'll see that written into our reports. After identifying the areas that were out of compliance, we assigned a value based on whether or not the public can access that area. So again, for example, is it a public area or an employee-only area? In that employee-only area, we're going to have a different value. Of course, back to Title I of the ADA for the question that we had previously, if an employee asks for an accommodation, we would address that at that time. We determine if this is an area where a city employee might escort a person, a member of the public. And then, that categorization really allows us to further determine the priorities that we have in barrier removal. Next slide, please. So here on the left, we have a photograph, a close-up of a sign that says "interview room," and the measuring tape reveals the bottom character, the height is located at 64.5 inches. Also, the sign did not have braille or any kind of tactile characters. The middle photograph is a defibrillator machine, and it's protruding from the wall seven inches, which is three inches too many. And then in the third photograph here, we have the push side of a double door, and the hardware that latches to the ground protrudes from the latch side of the door face and has this fairing surrounded the bottom portion, and the fairing is protruding from the bottom of the door. So these are things that we consider to be low mitigation difficulty, removing the defibrillator, lowering the sign. Next slide, please. These are some moderate mitigation difficulty barrier removals. The first photograph, we have a vertical level change in an entry or a sidewalk that is greater than a quarter vertical inch. So that might be where you grind down the concrete. The second photograph is a close-up view of the measurement of a countersink at 34.58 inches, that's too high, that sinks too high. The third photograph is the knee clearance underneath the counter, and that's at 22.5 inches, which is too low. So these are where you might raise or lower the sink or get rid of that knee clearance, depending on the situation there. Next slide, please. And then these are some, what we would consider to be high mitigation difficulty barriers, a bit more to do. The first is a parking space and the slope for the accessible parking slot, spot is too steep. The middle photograph is a toilet compartment from the sidewall to the side partition, and there's insufficient clearance there. And then the third photograph is the slope of an exterior walkway in front of the gate, and that's the accessible route, and the slope there, the cross slope is too steep as well. Next slide, please. We assessed 113 outdoor recreation facilities. And again, I'm not going to read these all aloud to you, but depending on your area, some of these probably fall within your districts. Next slide, please. And next slide. And next slide. We also assessed athletic complexes and golf courses. I know that was mentioned earlier as well. There are some facilities where you host programs that were assessed, but the, someone else owns the building. So Apex and Jefferson County own those buildings. So while we assessed some of those sites, that information was shared with those owners. But since you operate programs there, it's still your duty to make sure that those programs are accessible, so. Alright, next slide, please. This is our summary of findings for parks and shared-use paths, outdoor. And you can see here, in terms of low mitigation difficulty, moderate, and high, our low and moderate make up about half, a little more than half of that, while we do have almost half of them are high mitigation difficulty. It's also important, I think, to note at this point that 75 items from your parks and outdoor facilities were completed in 2020, and these were some of the low mitigation items. Also, drinking fountains that are compliant have also already been purchased to be placed in these areas. So some of this work has already started to get the city up to compliance. Next slide, please.
Dana, I have a question on the parks and golf course assessment. I notice with this picture here, the one on the right, when you have a sidewalk that's high like that, where does that fall in terms of the low, high, or medium mitigation? When you have a sidewalk that's high like that, um wh- where does that fall in terms of the low, high or medium mitigation?
I'm gonna let Jeff answer that question. My technical guru.
Okay, I'll uh take that one.
Thank you.
In general. We look at, you know, the amount of uh concrete that's gonna have to be removed to fix something like that. When you have a simple vertical discontinuity, a, a little level change. There is a process of doing lateral saw cuts, which is relatively inexpensive. There's a, a firm that does that type of work and they'll give you an estimate for as many of those as you want done. And it, it winds up costing very little per individual section. On the other hand, if you have, for instance, a sidewalk that's, oh say for fifty or a hundred feet, it's got a cross slope that's too steep. Um you're gonna have to tear out probably that entire section of sidewalk and that's gonna be a fairly high mitigation difficulty. Because basically you have to remove it, uh regrade and, and replace it. This is, um if I had to say, there's a thing that we see most often in what's going on with today's construction. Is new concrete being poured and being accepted with uh intolerable slopes in terms of what the ADA requires. Uh this has a lot to do with how uh concrete is finished. Uh it has something to do with how designers write up their plans. Um so for example, a cross slope of a sidewalk shouldn't be greater than one to forty-eight or two-point-one percent roughly. Um if you design to two-point-one percent, then if your concrete finisher comes in and does a sloppy job and you wind up it with a two-point-five percent. Now you've got a, a bad piece of concrete that's gonna have to be removed and replaced. And, and the concrete contractor could insist, well, that's within construction tolerance. If you design it to one-point-five percent and they come in at two-point-two percent, you can say, hey, you're, you're uh not within tolerance, tear it out, fix it, it's your cost. Um so that's a, a big factor, as you mentioned before. There's a lot of new stuff that gets built that's not compliant. Um i- to some extent, we, we generally are gonna look at stuff where you have, you know, it's one spot that's out of compliance is probably. You know, a minor piece of concrete work, might even be just maintenance work that your staff can do. Um that would be low mitigation difficulty, but when it winds up being, say, a sidewalk that goes all through a park or something. That has multiple locations where running or cross slopes are excessive, it's gonna be a major reinstall to fix that. That's why it's so important to figure out which spaces are used the most to figure out what your priorities are.
I, I, I wanna make a comment because I'd like, I'd like the city staff to also listen to this comment as well as you, Jeff. Because I, I don't frequent a lot of parks in Arvada. The only one that I truly frequent is the one that's across the street from where I live. And one of the problems that, I see two problems with that park and it gets a lot of use. Uh and I've also experienced personally and have seen where people have fallen off the sidewalk. And one of the problems that I've noticed is, is that the soil is not filled in alongside the edges of the sidewalks. And what happens is, is the sidewalk is much higher than the ground next to it, very much a trip hazard. The other thing that I've noticed in that park in particular is, and you just mentioned this, Jeff, and I agree with you completely. Because I think that concrete work is one of, um I don't know if it's just in Arvada here or if it's in the whole Denver area. But I've seen really poor concrete work and one of the problems is the slopes of these sidewalks. I can point out a number of areas in the park that I'm very familiar with. Where because of the way it has been constructed poorly, it accumulates water in the winter. The ice builds up, it never um melts unless you have a really good hot day. And you know, I, I appreciate what Dana said before because I think that the education has to be there. That when these things get poured and are taken care of, that we do have people that are out there inspecting and making sure. And, and, and it also goes to maintenance. Because um another issue that we have is the width of our sidewalks. And so when our trucks, which are larger than our sidewalks, don't make it around turns. They create these very deep ruts next to the sidewalk. And again, I see that as a, a very big issue uh in that one park, so I'm assuming it's probably in many parks. So I just wanted to bring that up because I have seen people fall off the sidewalk.
Yes, it's, it's um, to appreciate how difficult it is for somebody manually pushing a wheelchair to deal with a cross slope that's too steep. Imagine if, if your car, um if you're on a really steeply crowned road and you, you weren't hanging on to the steering wheel, your car would head for the gutter. And essentially for somebody manually pushing a wheelchair, every, every push is just that much harder. If at the same time they have to be fighting that, that cross slope. So it's, it's very important. Um I, I'm pretty familiar with concrete construction work, used to uh work for a, a engineering firm that, that built a lot of public works. And it's very critical to get the grade set properly and compacted properly. If it's not compacted properly, the, the sidewalks will, will sink and heave and do a lot of different things that you don't want them to do. Um it, it takes more effort and more time to do it, but a poorly constructed sidewalk winds up being a liability.
Absolutely, and I wanna tell you that you're absolutely right. It is all about the compaction. But you know, Jeff, I wanna make one other comment because we talk about wheelchairs, but I think that when you really look at it. The wheelchairs are very, yes, they're very important. But when you think about the issues that the majority of people have when it comes to walking. Those issues are balance issues and these, this is what is affecting our senior population. So if ground isn't filled in properly, or as you say, the compaction isn't done correctly and it's moving over time. And you have a lot of these rutted areas alongside, very easy for people to lose their footing. And uh fall off because of balance.
And certainly you have to understand that any of the things that you will do to make your facilities more accessible for people with disabilities. Whether they're using a, a white cane to, to find their way or using a walker or pushing a wheelchair. Those improvements are gonna make your facilities better for everybody. For, for children on learning how to ride a, a bicycle or a tricycle, for moms pushing strollers. Um i- it, it's a, it makes your whole community safer and healthier for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um so with our parks and, and golf courses, um. I just wanna point out that these areas typically have um very few employees who are guiding the public or escorting the public. Um and so um. That, that means that the public are accessing these, um these areas kind of, they're free to roam, they're, they're free to use your, your parks and recreation facilities. And so um it, it makes it very important that these um conditions are uh assessed and remediated. Next slide please. And these are some uh low mitigation difficulty barriers, um some typical findings. Uh the first here, we have the base of this exercise equipment was in, installed in the dirt. And it's several feet away from the edge of the sidewalk. There should be a, a firm, stable, slip-resistant um surface there. And the second photo in the middle is our data collector measuring the height uh to the cooking surface of the grill, which is um not correct. And then the third photograph is a tape measure at the end of a metal picnic table. Um that displays the depth of the knee, knee clearance, um which is in this case fewer than seven inches. Next slide please. And the first photo, these are our, our moderate mitigation difficulty barriers. The first photograph is a wooden weather shelter, um and the benches are less than sixty or ninety-six inches by sixty inches of covered space. And uh the second photograph and kind of the third photograph as well is this grill that doesn't have a connection to the accessible route. Uh across the grout or across the grass. And then the, the third is the picnic table and the grill don't have that connection um to the accessible route as well. Next slide please. And, and these are some examples of uh high mitigation difficulty barriers. Um these are a, a playground and so uh the first shows a smart level. Um on the surface adjacent to a, a ground play component at a seventeen-point-four percent slope, which is too, too much. The photograph in the middle is a, again, the smart level on the ground surface adjacent to a transfer platform. Um to the elevated play structure and that's at a five-point-three percent, which is too steep. And then the um third photo here on the right is this playground with elevated play structures. But it doesn't have the accessible grounds level um play components um that are required. Um next slide please. So we're gonna move from uh facilities and parks to um the public right-of-way accessibility guidelines or what we call PROAG. Um these guidelines have not been formally um. Issued by the Department of Justice um as the regulatory standards. Uh we are um hearing that the current administration um is likely to make these uh the regulatory standards. Um so we, uh the city selected PROAG to use as its best practice. This is what CDOT uses as well. Um for the pedestrian facilities and the public right-of-way. And whether or not you use PROAG, what's important to remember here is the Title II regulations clearly indicate that. The local government um that has responsibility over streets, roads, walkways. Must include in their uh transition plan a schedule for providing curb ramps or other sloped areas where pedestrian walks. Uh curb, cross curbs, giving priorities to walkways, public facilities and places of public accommodation. So again, whatever guidelines um any entity, Title II entity chooses to use. There is a requirement for making your sidewalks, your curb ramps and pedestrian street crossings. Um accessible to and usable by qualified people with disabilities. Um this is a program of pedestrian transportation. Um and so um it's our, our recommendation and the, this uh city agreed uh that PROAG was the, the best uh standards to use. Next slide please. Through the public right-of-way evaluation, um we collected two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-two attributes. Uh while in the field and identified uh just over thirty-two thousand elements of pedestrian facilities. For which one or more of the attributes were not consistent with the PROAG. An attribute for us, um our, our definition is a, a measurement of the dimensions or slopes and observations of other conditions. Uh that are necessary to determine compliance. An element are these structures of pedestrian facilities, things like curb ramps, pedestrian signals. Uh pedestrian access routes, street crossings, um or other objects that might obstruct um access by people with disabilities. And sidewalks that are less than forty-eight inches wide do not meet the minimum width provisions. For a pedestrian access route in PROAG. Um so PROAG says forty-eight inches for the sidewalk, but a thirty-six uh inch width does meet the minimum width. Um of an accessible route in the ADA standards. So based on this, uh we recommended and the city agreed that we would not collect any data on sidewalks that were less than thirty-six inches. Because they're not even minimally compliant. If it's a, a twenty-eight, thirty-two inch sidewalk, thirty-three inch, it's not compliant. So those vertical discontinuities or protruding objects, um they, they matter, but uh it, it's not worth the time. We already know that needs to be pulled out and made accessible. Um so I just wanna uh make that clear as we move forward. Next slide please. Um so this is a um, a table of our um. Uh findings by, by program score. And so um we really take a, a human-centered approach to determining how to remediate these barriers. In the pedestrian facilities. Um so instead of saying, you know, this, this uh discontinuity is two inches and this one's half an inch. The two inches is worse than the half an inch. We take a look at where do we find these barriers? Are they close to or approximate to where the um public uses facilities? So outside your city hall, for example, any kind of covered entity, a school. Will there be children, you know, walking and parents, grandparents walking to and from this school? You know, how many blocks away uh from this covered entity is, is the park that someone's using, et cetera? So we have a, a formula that we use to um kind of develop our, our score. Of what we believe is the most important to fix immediately. And so this table is kind of a, a breakdown of that. Next slide please. Some typical barriers that we find in the public right-of-way, I've mentioned a few of them already, but are. Um here's some of them, a, a discontinuity in the walking service, an organic protrusion uh within the circulation path. So a tree branch, a bush, um built protrusions, a, a utility pool, for example. Um a, a bench that's put into a sidewalk, um any kind of horizontal opening or gap. Um walking surfaces that are not firm and stable. Um the sidewalk that are less than forty-eight inches, they have cross slopes that are too sleep, steep or running slopes that are too steep. Um curb ramps that are missing where, where they are required, that are diagonal. Um or have one or more critical slope too steep. Um curb ramps that are missing a top or bottom uh turning space, uh a curb ramp with a blended transition. Um that has a, a missing or non-compliant detectable warning. Uh I can tell you, I spent the weekend in Santa Fe and all of their detectable warnings are um not compliant. I, I didn't see a single one that was compliant. It drove me nuts the whole time I was there walking. Um you set it right on top. Um the turning spaces at the top or the, the bottom um are too s- uh too small. The walk interval for a pedestrian signal, which should be three-point-five feet per second, um it's too short. Someone can't uh cross the uh with the pedestrian signal in enough time. Um the controls, the buttons that you push are, aren't within the reach ranges, they're, or too far. Maybe set back um too, too far behind. Um and then that, that time starts to run for the person who's trying to cross the street. Um a street crossing um with the uh running slopes or cross slopes that are too steep. Uh detectable warnings that are uh missing or um. Damaged um street furniture that I mentioned. Next slide please. Um and these are some examples. Um so each of these are uh varying degrees of uh difficulty, effort and cost to be remediated. Uh the context and location of the finding, as I mentioned before, really affects the priority and the cost to the resolution. Jeff mentioned that a little bit earlier. So at the low end, uh there are things that can be uh simply done with um. Maintenance, trimming a tree branch, et cetera. At the high end, uh this might require uh removal or redesign, replacement um of a curb ramp, et cetera. Next slide please. Here are some other visual examples for you of a barrier or low mitigation difficulty barrier. So the first is a curb ramp without a detectable warning surface. Um the second is uh the smart level, we use it as straight edge to, to display the height of a vertical discontinuity. And then the third we have here is a tree branch protruding out at fifty-six inches. Next slide please. Some uh mitigation difficulty barrier or moderate mitigation difficulty barrier removals are uh this cross slope is four percent. Um the second photo is a bench and a bus shelter and the wheelchair space at the end is obstructed by the advertising. And then the photo on the right is uh the tape measure shows that the pedestrian con- controls at fifty-six inches. Um which is too high. Uh next slide please. And these are some high mitigation difficulty barriers. So um this is. Uh the first, a perpendicular ramp without turning space at the top. Um the second photo is a sidewalk with no curb pad or no curb ramp. And then the third is um showing a sidewalk that's only thirty inches. And then the third is um, showing a sidewalk that's only thirty inches, which we've already mentioned. Um, so those are higher mitigation difficulties. All right, uh, next slide please. Already talked about this a, a, a bit, but um, I want to go into a little bit more how we prioritize um, the way to remove these barriers. Um, and so our priority is based on location, as I've mentioned. We looked at the city's planning and use zones. Uh, we looked at the, the nearness to other covered entities. Uh, places that are gonna um, generate a higher volume of pedestrian traffic. Um, and uh, again, the degree of difficulty is not a major factor. Um, but it is important to remember that if the public requests or has a complaint, and that elevates the priority. So if you have a um, an area that you're not planning on uh, fixing or uh, remediating the curb ramps for another five years, but you have a, a resident um, that lets you know they really need that curb ramp to be um, fixed. Um, you're gonna elevate that priority and get that done um, sooner rather than later. Next slide please. Um, pedestrian facilities in the public right of way. Um, as we've mentioned, serve a, a public program and that's pedestrian transportation. And so I know that we use sidewalks a lot for recreational activities, but the primary function is to serve pedestrian transportation needs. Um, and so we really look at the first mile um, from home to public transit. Um, and then the last mile from public transit to uh, the location where an individual might go as being those um, top priorities. Um, and we know that to travel um, even a short distance on a public sidewalk um, that is non-compliant, has a negative impact on a person with a disability's ability to access local services, places of public accommodation, public transit, um, et cetera. Next slide please. Um, so to achieve program access, um, the city um, has planned to take steps to physically remove or mitigate uh, barriers from facilities or to ensure through other methods and means that all your services, programs and activities um, offered in the facilities are made accessible to and usable by qualified people within uh, with disabilities. Um, and we know that there are limitations to funding um, and other resources. There's logistical challenges to coordinating all of this. Um, but um, after um, talking with your staff um, over the, the last year or so, um, our preliminary schedule for your transition plan um, anticipates ten years to resolve findings in the city buildings, fifteen years to resolve findings in the parks and golf courses, and twenty years to resolve findings in the city's right of way. Uh, next slide please. And the priority for city facilities has been ranked based on factors, including the amount of program mass access or public presence anticipated in each of these facilities. Um, your existing renovation or capital improvement plan and the overall degree of mitigation difficulty. Um, and the highest priority facilities um, have been ranked uh, in the following order to be completed by the year twenty twenty four. So the Arvada Center, Majestic View Nature Center, City Hall, the Food Bank, the Lake Arbor and Westwood Golf Course Clubhouses and the City Hall Annex. Next slide please. Um, from there, uh, we've uh, broken it out in um, twenty twenty five to twenty thirty to um, remediate barriers in um, this listing of facility projects. Um, and all that was also outlined in the transition plan. Next slide please. So from twenty twenty one to twenty thirty one, um, in the parks and golf courses. Um, the city has um, suggested that they complete eighty percent of all the maintenance or kind of those low hanging fruit items in the first three years. And having a hundred percent of those maintenance items completed in five years. Um, to have entry items at athletic fields completed in the first two years. And then at other park districts, the entry items, com- the, those things completed in years two to five. And then the service and restroom items across all the parks um, completed in five to ten years. And so uh, these are things like um, providing the minimum number of compliant accessible parking spaces, um, accessible routes to site arrival points and the amenities like the benches, et cetera. Um, accessible routes connecting features and amenities within the site. Uh, removing protrusions in the outdoor circulation paths. Um, providing accessible routes to wheelchair spaces um, on both sides of your courts for spectators and for players. And um, providing safe and accessible surfaces for, and accessible routes and clear ground spaces uh, to and at entry points for your play structures. Next slide please. When looking at the right of way, as I mentioned, uh, we estimated about twenty years um, to complete all of the items that were found. And so this is a uh, a map, a, a heat map that kind of indicates the areas where we have um, more um, items that need to be re- remediated. Uh, you can see a lot of that is concentrated around the Old Town area. Next slide please. Um, we broke the projects up into forty suggestive um, projects and all of those maps were provided in the transition plan. Um, but you can see um, for this, for twenty twenty one, we overlaid the um, areas that need to be remediated with your current CIP. Jeff, can you take this real quick?
So um, what these maps uh, outline is the actual uh, spots that need remediation. And, you know, looking at what plans were already present, the, the CIP plans that were out there. Uh, it seems like the most logical thing would be to use the uh, items that we identified as barriers as sort of a punch list of, of things to be addressed while you're already in those areas doing the work. Uh, it will probably cost something more to do these uh, remediations at that time, but it will uh, hopefully blend into existing budgets that have already been allocated for doing the work. Uh, so it's um, we're, we're trying to make this as practical and especially in the early years of the transition plan. Um, not, not try to kick in a lot of extra costs right away, give you some time to uh, anticipate the, the costs going down the road. Next slide.
Um, so we put together some summary budgets with the opinions of probable construction costs. For parks and golf, uh, it's a little over sixteen million. For facilities, a little over two million. And for the public right of way, a little over a hundred and ninety seven million. So the total cost for everything within the transition plan is um, to our estimation, about uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Million.
Thank you, million. Let's, let's try in there for y'all. All right, next slide please. There have been some questions about um, funding recommendations, since this is um, quite a big uh, pill to swallow. So we recommend that you continue to connect any of your ADA projects with your capital improvement projects. Also wanted to mention uh, the, a sales tax increase that was successful here in Colorado Springs. Um, if you want to look it up, it was a ballot item two C. And it allowed our city to impose a uh, sixty two perc- or point six two percent sales tax uh, for a five year period. Um, and it has passed a- again, so went through the first five years and now is on to the second um, five years. Uh, but what was really great about it is the city really outlined specifically what they were going to do. So it started with um, residents in Colorado Springs being um, you know, really ticked off that there were a lot of potholes and they wanted their potholes fixed. Um, but when you start the known overlay process for the potholes, uh, that triggers um, ADA making it curb rock, curb ramps and sidewalks compliant. And so they really outlined that. Um, and um, and we're very transparent that the sales tack, r- r- sales tax revenue is only applied to uh, roads with about fifty percent um, dedicated to the sidewalks, curves and gutters. Um, so um, their ballot language is, is listed on their two C website, if that's something that you all are interested in um, taking a look at. And then also, um, we, we would just mention that the small business tax credits and deductions. Um, if you work with maybe some of your small business owners, um, there, that credit can cover about fifty percent of eligible access expenditures in a year to offset the cost of barrier removal and alterations to improve accessibility. So maybe in that Old Town area, outside uh, the storefronts, et cetera, where maybe you could partner and, and match uh, with your small businesses um, to get some of those im- improvements and they can help you with those costs. Um, because I guarantee you, if, if their storefronts are accessible, they're going to have more people in there and um, that will create more revenue uh, for them as well. So those are some of our funding recommendations. Next slide please. Um, Kim mentioned this in the very beginning, but we did go through a public outreach program. Um, your public information office did a great job of putting all sorts of information out to the public and giving um, great um, access to the transition plan through um, many different um, mediums. And um, as Kim mentioned, we did host two meetings, a virtual meeting and an in-person meeting. Uh, we had limited attendance in the, the virtual meeting and no attendance. Uh, but we did receive twenty six uh, responses from the public. Next slide please. So we um, had over sixty five percent of the respondents live in the zip code eight zero 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 four and eight zero 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 five. Um, fifty four percent were community members without a disability. The average age was uh, just over forty nine years. Seventy three percent uh, said that they participate in your programs, activities and services and that the, they visit most the Arvada Center, Majestic View Community Park, Ladybug Park and Millcovee Park. Um, next slide please. Um, what was also interesting is only sixty one and a half percent reviewed the transition plan that they commented on. And uh, fifteen percent didn't agree with the prioritization. Um, uh, some of the comments were, what's the point of getting people into parks if they cannot safely navigate the rest of the city? And um, someone also uh, said you appear to be checking boxes to pass an audit. Think about the constituency, constituents and not the boxes, you know, um, this is a, a federal law. Um, and so in, in a way you are um, checking, checking the box and making sure that you're compliance, uh, compliant and uh, mitigating risk uh, to the city. Uh, twenty seven percent had concerns about the plan, um, specifically with the costs. Um, someone said the large costs associated uh, with the updates. I hope the estimates are overestimations. Um, so there, where the funding recommendations come in. Um, someone said thirty six inches for sidewalks is not reasonable. It's the bare minimum and that sucks for a person in a wheelchair, a person with a disability, a person with a child. There's a major over prioritization of parking and room for cars versus room for people. These tiny sidewalks are almost worse than no sidewalks. Um, and someone also said, I think sidewalks around the city and especially the little half sidewalk curbs in older neighborhoods should be a top priority. I walk in them every day and find many times it's easier just to walk in the street. Next slide. Um, one of the questions is um, that we asked is, do you know of a barrier that we might not have been aware of? Uh, and someone said entrances for PWD, which is Persons with Disabilities at City Hall. Um, those in chairs can roll to the elevator. It's not accessible for uh, the persons with disabilities with um, other mobility issues. It's too far to walk. Um, someone had a comment about Majestic View Park and the curb cuts. Um, being too narrow and uh, this person uses a scooter. And then a third person said, uh, feel like the solution's out of reach. Uh, but as a longtime resident in Old Town, the sidewalks and curb cutouts are very difficult to maneuver due to the unevenness and narrow sidewalks. It's hard, if not impossible, for a child to ride on or stroller, let alone a wheelchair. But um, most wheelchair choose to use the street, even though you spent all the money years ago to add ramps to all of the corners. Also, some of the trash services demanding their patrons place their garbage cans in the gutter is not helping with sidewalk accessibility. Next slide please. Um, but we, we did get uh, resounding uh, feedback that a transition plan is important. Uh, this one person said it's quite important as it only improves better access for all. We mentioned that before. Um, I do believe increased public education is needed regarding ADA compliance, especially related to ADA parking spaces utilized as drop off or pickup zones and confusion as to what the slanted stripes next to these parking spaces are for. Someone says it's very important. It allows us to be more mobile without using our vehicles. And another person said it's very important as many seniors begin to experience disabilities as they age, but still want access to community facilities and parks. And uh, next slide. So that is our, our workshop and our presentation. I know we've had some questions throughout, but we'd be uh, open to answering those questions for you at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Marion, I know you've got a question?
I do. I have actually a couple of questions. And the first one might be for maybe Mr. Vega or somebody. I'm a little bit, little bit surprised to see that one of the city facilities in here that we're gonna tackle first or nearly first is the Westwoods Golf Course Clubhouse. Didn't we just reconstruct that whole thing a couple of years ago? And how in the world did we end up out of ADA compliance in probably our newest city facility?
Those are low priority and uh, we do have some concrete movement out at Westwoods that uh, we have that quarter inch cap going on with the hot soils.
So it's, it's just things like that. It's not actually.
No, no, the, the building was designed to ADA compliance. There's just small issues here and there, uh, but they're on the, the lower end, not on the upper end.
Okay, got it. So then I have a question for, for probably Dana. And, and Dana, it's, it's, I'm sure you've had this question before, but what do you do about city facilities, places in the city? And I think immediately of like the Allen House or the McAvoy House or the Visitor's Center, um, historical resources that are not easily and maybe not even um, might not even be desirable to change them significantly for ADA uh, compliance. I mean, it seems like there get, there could possibly be a, you know, a conundrum there. Does ADA compliance always take precedence and you just have to not use those facilities anymore if you can't strictly comply or you wreck the historical value of it to comply? What do you do there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, and uh, that's not an uncommon question as, as you mentioned. Um, so again, um, we're looking at things as viewed in their entirety. So what are the program services, activities that you're offering out of those locations? Is it, um, would it be acceptable to um, not host some of those programs there? Um, those are the, the types of things that you um, you have to look at. There is also a provision for technical and feasibility. Um, so if you're looking at a, an old historic um, building that now you need to um, place an elevator shaft in and it's gonna um, significantly um, mess up the historical um, building. Uh, that might not be something that you do. You may decide not to offer programs on the second floor of that building. Um, because it's, it's not accessible and you're not going to put an, an elevator in. Um, so there are, are different things that you can do. Um, Jeff, I'm sure you could weigh in on this a little bit as well.
I, yeah, I, I would like to state that you, you're not required to do these things, i- in other words, to make changes that would cause a fundamental alteration or damage or threaten to damage a historical feature of a building. But you still have to make your programs accessible at the end of the day. So if because a building isn't accessible, an individual with a disability was not able to access the service or program offered there and that service or program was not offered someplace else, that would be discrimination under the ADA. So if you can find an alternative means of providing that service or activity or, or program, that's, that's okay that you don't fix that specific uh, issue.
But, but isn't it anything a city government were to offer in a historical facility would have to be accessible to everybody? Like, how do you have, you know, you can say, well, you just can't have your visitor's center in a historical house anymore. You know, you can say, well, you just can't have your visitor's center in a historical house anymore. You have to have it somewhere else. But, but that entails you can't have anything in that historical house because. Anything you have there needs to be accessible, I guess, unless you make it. City employees only and you make accommodations for them, uh, individually and, and, and that's all you can do with that resource then.
Possibly, um, I, I look at historical facilities falling into two contexts. The one is. Uh, for example, in Colorado, we've had lots of old courthouses that were built in the nineteenth century. And if the only way to get into those courthouses is upstairs. You're probably going to have to move your court services to, to another building, end of the day. Cause no judge is going to decide at the last minute that, oh, we're going to move across the street to an accessible space to conduct this hearing because somebody showed up. A witness for this, you know, showed up in a wheelchair. Um, that's not going to happen. On the other hand, um, some buildings are used. Uh, and their, their program is their historical value. So I'll, I'll tell you some of my history. I come from Illinois and when you're in eighth grade, you get a, a trip down to, to New Salem to see where Abe, Abe Lincoln had a cabin. Um, I don't, I don't think it's still the original cabin to be honest, but it is old and it is historical. So you're not going to take and build a ramp. And widen that door by ten inches to make it accessible. But you can provide a virtual tour of that facility to somebody who can't actually physically access it. Um, uh, the Molly Brown House in, in Denver is another example of that kind of a facility where you're not going to put an elevator in that building. But you can provide it as a museum, you can provide access to the, the features that are offered on the second floor of the building. So those, those are kind of two different situations. I do know, um, working with the city of Littleton, they have an older building that they're going to. Put their engineering staff in, in a space that, uh, probably is not going to be made accessible in an old building. Uh, those, there are some choices. Uh, end of the day, some of your older facilities are maybe just, um, more of a liability than an asset in some cases.
Okay, thanks. Um, and so, uh, let me ask another question then on a different, kind of different subject. One of your, um. One of your, uh, recommendations is that the city employ a full-time ADA coordinator? Is that, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. And what are the alternatives to doing that?
I mean, the al- alternative is what you have right now, um, where you have it, um, under a, a person as other duties as assigned. Um, and. Jeff probably says this better than I do, but, um. What happens is when a, a person moves on from the city. You know, takes their next opportunities promoted, then that other duties as assigned. Just gets lumped onto the next person who may not have, um, the training, the experience, the connections. Um, to help move that program along. But if you have an ADA coordinator and that's a, a job description, a, a job title that you have. When that person moves, moves along or retires, whatever it is, then you refill that opening and that's, um. That person's focus. To get that done. And, you know, this is a, a really large program. You know, we're estimating two hundred and fifteen million dollars to, um, to remediate. All of these things to make sure that your entire staff is trained. To make sure that policies are continually, uh, reviewed, that you're updating staff on policies. It's a, it's a full-time job. Um. We've, uh, we've worked with, um, for example, Larimer County. Um, after we did their self-evaluation and transition plan, um, Jeff helped write that job description for them. Helped hire that person. That person has since retired and last week, um, he sat on the interview panel for the. Um, uh, the next folks who have applied for that job. It, it's become that important, that critical for, uh, for that county. Um, other places divided up. So maybe HR does some. Maybe Public Works does some, your facilities manager does some, um, but. We put together this plan. Your team has put together this plan and now you have to implement the plan. It's a, it's a big task. You don't want to have done all this work just for something to sit on the shelf because. Something else comes up, you know, water mains break, uh, fires happen, uh, we have weather incidents, et cetera. We really do need someone focused on this.
So the, the would lead me to the question then of, there's gotta be towns that are so small that hiring a full-time ADA coordinator is. Not possible or, or not even necessary.
Sure.
And then there are places that are so big, like you mentioned, maybe Larimer County or Denver County or somewhere like that where. Where they probably have a whole team of ADA accessible people. There's gotta be some metric that you would use to determine at what point, you know, what's the breakover point at which it. Requires a full-time person. Any idea what that is or can you express to us how, how, how you'd make that value judgment other than just saying? Ah, it's a big job. It'll take a long time. It would be better if you had one, but there's gotta be. Data, data-driven decisions here about why, why would you, why would you take that step or not? Because, you know, the, the all-in cost of a ADA coordinator, I don't know what it is, but it's probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year. But between their wages and benefits and a place to work out of and vehicles to drive around in and. Conferences to go to and certifications to achieve and, you know, every, everything that it takes to have something like that. And I mean. You, 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 we would be faced with, do we put that money towards solving the problems or do we make, build that into overhead? And then try to solve the problems from somewhere. So there's gotta be some data that would lead us to, how do we make that decision? What would that be?
I'm not sure I have that, that data at hand. Um, Jeff, you might, um. And I, I could certainly, you know, we operate the Rockinout ADA Center. Um, as I mentioned, one of ten federally funded centers, a, a different center, the Great Plains Center. Has a national project where they certify people to be ADA coordinators. I know Kim has gone through that training. Um, they may have some specific data as it relates to Title II entities that I could, um. Uh, try to find, but I, I don't have a, you know, this is, at this point when you have X number of dollars to reme- needed to remediate or. X number of employees, um. But I, you know.
I guess I'm, I'm asking for, for help. How would we make that decision? How do we make that decision about do we hire an ADA coordinator or do we not?
I'll jump in here for a second. Um, I, I mean, I can't. Tell you exactly how to make, there's not a number there, okay? I mean, the, the Department of Justice went so far as to say, if you have fewer than fifty full-time employees. That isn't a requirement of the regulations to have somebody designated as an ADA coordinator. Um, the fact of the matter is that sometimes. Um, the efficiency of getting things done, if you have one person in charge of it who has some authority and responsibility for getting things done. It might work better than having a committee to do it. But maybe it's more practical for you to have, um, the duties separated amongst people in different departments. But I would highly encourage you to, um, make that a very firm. Resolution that people realize that is a, a prime, uh, part of their job. Uh, there's, you know, I, I guess I would say that, um. In, in our history at the ADA Center, we've done surveys several times to try and, you know, find for people who had complaints against a. A, a public government, um, to find the ADA coordinator for the entity. And quite often, I, I would say more than fifty percent of the time. Public entities who should have somebody designated as an ADA coordinator do not. Or it is impossible to figure out who that person is. And if I'm a person with a disability, I've got a complaint against the city of Arvada and I can't figure out who to contact. Uh, if I don't get results, I, I can call the Department of Justice. I can call the state's, uh, Department of, uh, Division of Civil Rights. And get my resolution that way. And I guarantee you that's not the way you want to find out that you have problems.
Yeah. Of course, that's not what I was talking about. I wasn't talking about the city not having an ADA coordinator. It's whether this is an additional FTE that that's that person's exclusive job. So anyway, no, I, I, you've answered it. I appreciate, I appreciate you. Talking about it. Thank you. Um, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Well, this is a, a topic that I think is near and dear to me. I, I think I bring it up quite a bit. You know, as I've been an advocate for us enforcing our parking, uh, handicap and. Uh, handicap parking in private, uh, lots for years. And, um, just being able to, you know, just even my grandparents, just thinking of them in general. And the Think of Me campaign, I think that was very successful and I think it should continue. Um, when you think of me campaigning, you know, i- it's not just somebody in a wheelchair. It's, you know, like I said, it's elderly. It's. Could be any type of disability, um, and we just need to think more broadly when we, when we approach this. So a couple of questions I have or maybe more comments than anything, but. You know, I'm surprised in new construction area, you know, I looked at your heat map. And it just seems that with new construction area that we're already finding deficiencies or whatever you want to call them. Now granted, they might be low. You know, sidewalk movement. We live in this, this thing called, this clay in the ground always screws up our concrete and roads. But, you know, the one thing I want to make sure that maybe the team would, would remember is my boss always tells me. You know, don't in, you know, don't expect what you don't inspect. So we as, as a culture in our, in our city, we have to make sure we're all good and we're all clear and we're all singing the same sheet of music. That when we're thinking about building something that, you know, when I think of that last shelter, uh, I think that's at Lake Arbor, that shelter. I think it's some of our employees that think it's a great idea. I could save us some money. We'll throw it up. We'll do a good job and get them out of getting, you know, struck by lightning. That's what we're worried about. Didn't think about, okay, well, it was two inches short on the bench and. And, and that's why you need a coordinator is because you need somebody who's like thinking a little bit bigger and broader than the people trying to just solve the immediate problem. Um, so, um, that kind of leads into why I do think it's important to have a coordinator. We are the. Uh, uh, fifth largest city in the front, in the Denver metro area. We're the seventh largest city in the state. And yet we have no, well, sorry, I shouldn't say we have no one watching the ball on this one. We do have somebody who is. Part-time watching the ball as best he can with all the other ten thousand balls you probably threw in your lap. I'm, I'm pretty sure we have a lot on you. Um, but having somebody dedicated because you have to have that institutional knowledge between all of this information, which is really in-depth and broad. And, and, and having a cheerleader, uh, around this to help remind. The golf team that went up to throw up the shelter because they were trying to solve a lightning issue in an open area. You know, uh, we're just trying to do good work. We just happened to maybe miss that one. Some of the other things, uh, that you pointed out, I'll just have to say it's just old. At the end of the day, there's just some old stuff here and we're, we're, you know, um. I, I'm not going to say we're frugal, but you know, we're very, we watch the taxpayer dollars a lot here in Arvada and. But we also need to be an accessible Arvada. Um, as far as, uh, the historic buildings, the one thing also the pro- the coordinator I think would be a good play. Is the users of these buildings, I don't think they know. You know, I'm thinking of the Historical Society, even the Chamber, you can talk about the Visitor Center, you can talk about the, the, um, Food Bank, um, Jam, uh, what is it? I was going to say Space Jam, since that's coming out, but what's the place that's using? Peace Jam. There we go, sorry. It's because it's coming back. Um, the, uh, you know, they may not know that they have to bring their programs down to be accessible if they're public programs. And who in the city other than you, um, that has all the other things to do? Can we dedicate to educate and reinforce some of those, those things? I think that's important. Um, as far as, uh, participation is low, I was a little concerned, but I will tell you. What threw me in the participation is the fact that you used the word transition in all your communication. When you say ADA transition, I'm not thinking, I, I don't, I don't know what that means. I, I did not know what that means and I'm, I feel I'm an advocate of this. It didn't, it didn't click for me when you see the social media go out. So that could be us. But we need to use other words that mean something to somebody who doesn't understand. Uh, ADA, the word, you know, the acronym, uh, what is the transition? Why are you using the word transition? You know, when you say ADA transition surveys coming up and so forth. Um, I, I think we would have gotten more participation if we used, um. Different, different words out of the vocabulary. So, um. And I think those are all the notes I had, the comments I had. I think this is great work. It's a lot of work. Oh, the other thing about the coordinator that would be very important, this is, this is project management. At the end of the day, this is massive project management. Trying to even think that you're going to coordinate between public works and utilities and parks and, uh, PD. And, uh, and, and making sure that no one missed that one little beat that the. The, the base of a, a playground is just off by, and not, you know, we do our best. But if it's just off, but if you have that extra layer and overlay that helps support this effort. It will just make a better community. It might not be perfect, but it won't be where it is today. And, and I just, you know, want to make sure that when you have that cheerleader here. I think, I think we'll see a whole different way when we look at, when we go in the, in the bathrooms. I was just thinking about that. The other day when I walked in the bathroom, how the ca- the counters seemed different. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's interesting that you measured them on the same counters, but they've been there since probably, I don't know, the eighties. Um, if not longer. Um, but anyways, that's all I have. I don't have any questions. I just had a lot of comments and good work. And I'd like to just know, the only thing I probably would ask, and you don't need to say it tonight, is. Like to really see that what, what does this mean in a timeline and financial impact and, and so forth. And I know you'll have all that. But really, if we're to try to get to, uh, the two hundred and fifteen million over twenty or thirty years. Uh, what does it take to get there? And then meanwhile, let's not, let's not be, um. Bleeding in more problems when we're trying to solve the problems we already have. So. How do you close that gap to make sure? And again, that's why, again, the coordinator can help close that gap to. To, uh, uh, make sure not new issues get put into the pile. I mean, at the end of the day, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor Protim.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Thank you very much. Um, a comment and a couple of questions. Um. Again, a lot of work and I was surprised, um, at the number of facility. I guess you don't really think about how many things have to be looked at. And when you said a hundred and thirteen parks and, oh my gosh, you know, I. I can see this building, but you forget about all the other, uh, amenities that the city has. Um, one thing, Mr. Pfeiffer, when you're, you know, talking about the word transition. We hired the experts. I would have expected them to make sure that the language would generate more than twenty-six responses. Um, I saw it, all the social media go out. I got it. Um, but twenty-six respondents, that seems very, very low. And if the buzzwords weren't there, then we need to go back to the, the experts and ask them to fix the words, um, for sure. Um, so I, I think that's a good, I think that's a good comment. Um, I would be curious and I don't, and I'm going to put Mr. Wick on the spot here. Um, to, uh, to get your, uh, um, insight on the position. That we're talking about this ADA coordinator and how do you see that working inside of the city? Are you, could you just give us a little bit of insight on kind of your thoughts on that?
Yes, uh, thank you for asking the question. Um, well, first of all, I would agree that I think this is a position that we need to have. Um, and the reason that I recommend this is because. Kim is currently our ADA coordinator and he is responsible, of course, for. All of our facilities, all of our building, all of our city construction. In fact, just today, we were having a, a briefing meeting on the projects that he's working on and we were going through the list. And it's pretty substantial and it, and it's ongoing all the time. What my expectation would be of the position is that this person would be responsible for. Knowing all of the, to the extent possible, the knowledge about ADA. Uh, what the Department of Justice expects, all of the guidelines and conditions that are necessary to, uh, meet ADA compliance. Take care of our policies and recommend policies, procedures and updates to that. But I think probably the most important thing is that coordination piece that Councilmember Pfeiffer, uh, talked about. So we've got. To coordinate with our Parks Golf Hospitality folks. We need to coordinate with our facilities team, which is Kim and all of his team. And then the public right-of-way, which is, which is the largest. So that means every year we've got to be looking at our street maintenance plan, concrete replacement plan. Anytime we're going to be replacing ADA ramps or doing anything like that, that needs that ADA review. Uh, same thing with parks, updating parks, any new parks. And then when we, uh, are looking at developments, uh, again, it needs to be evaluated from the perspective of ADA. What I really need to have in place to make this effective is somebody who comes to work every day thinking about. How does what we're getting ready to do impact ADA and how can we be compliant? So as was mentioned by Jeff and Dana, um, we have a number of CIP projects where of course we are wanting to make sure. That ADA compliant structures are built. And we also need to make sure that. And we also need to make sure that that coordination takes place and that there's review there. So, that, that's why I believe this position is really that critical.
Well, I mean, and if you think about all of the places that ADA touches, I mean, it seems like it impacts our community and development team as they're approving, you know, structures that are going to be built out in the community that are not city-owned. And so, again, I think there's a lot of different layers. And so how does that, how does that one person really facilitate all of those asks?
So I, so the ADA person, of course, would have the broadest knowledge of kind of everything ADA, if you will. But it's going to require falling upon the expertise of the people that are actually involved in project design and all of that. I don't see the ADA coordinator is actually doing the work, but rather making sure that that work is being done. And then the other piece about the coordinator is what do we not know that we don't know yet that somebody could come in here and help us really understand that? For example, one of the things that we've been doing this week is we've been talking with other cities that, we were doing it last week, today's Monday, other cities that actually have the ADA coordinator position in place and discussing with them what that person does. Everybody has reported to us how consuming that position is because there's just so much work to do. So, there's, there's a, I think that there's a lot to be done and then there's probably things we don't even know.
Yeah, no, I would agree and, you know, having, you know, a business and having people that work for me who have special needs of access and so on and so forth, it's, it's an important conversation and I'm glad that we're having it. And I'm glad that we're trying to figure out how do you fund at least parts of it over the next several years.
Yes.
My only comment is 25 years seems like a long time to get to some of those things. And if, if ADA compliance and the, the expectations, it seems to me like those are going to continue to change and evolve over time. And how will that then impact kind of the end result? So it feels to me like a, an ever-moving target.
Yes.
That isn't, isn't going to get any easier over time.
And of course, we've watched that transition over the years, you know, since ADA was first adopted, then there's been the evolution of those standards. And of course, that's what we want to keep up on and be on top of.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Stay there.
Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you. So I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. I, I got to say, it's kind of, it seems shocking when you first see that number, 200-plus million dollars. Oh, boy. I do not envy Mr. Archer looking at this. So much of that though is due to our aging infrastructure. Like we said, we didn't even look at sidewalks worth wider than 30 inches because they just all are out of compliance. But I tell you, on top of those sidewalks, many of which are in my district, some in John's and Nancy's as well, it, it's just that older infrastructure and there's so many problems with it already. Living in Lamar Heights, I, I know seniors that walk in the street as opposed to on the sidewalks because it's too dangerous. I myself, I loved to joke that I lost all the baby weight because pushing a stroller around Lamar Heights was like doing an obstacle course every day. And truth is, is it really was. It was great exercise for me. So just looking at that, perhaps some of the smaller items like handrails in the parks, I know we have stairs in Majestic View, I've gotten calls from seniors because there are no handrails there. And so they feel like that's just not safe, it's a fall risk, like little things like that. So I, I too come down in support of doing this position. There's so many just little things. And as we've noted, there's so many thousands of things already on your plate that I think for a city just the sheer size of Arvada with such an aged infrastructure as Arvada, as many as our wonderful parks as Arvada, which is something we're very proud of, but I, I think a position is just absolutely critical. We have to, we have to have somebody managing all of these balls that are in the air. And my hope is that it's, that we don't actually have an even higher budget than what we've projected here at this terrifying number. Because I, I'm thinking that once we get to some of these larger costs with the infrastructure, it might even be higher than what we're anticipating now, so. Yeah. Oh, and in terms of the survey, 26 responses, so many of our senior residents aren't on social media. Please tell me, we're, we're doing phones and other things to get responses from those that may not be on Facebook?
We have been looking at what other alternatives are available for us to have that outreach take place. So our, our communications team, well, when we talk about accessibility, this is a perfect case in point about how do you communicate with the whole spectrum of our community.
Exactly, thank you. Utility Bill. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I wanted to say, first of all, that to Dana and Jeff, I read your document and I really appreciated it. I thought it was very well-written, very understandable. One thing that was missing for me was the definition of disability. So I went onto the internet and looked up what the definition of disability was from the ADA standpoint and learned that it is not the same as the medical definition of disability. So that was very interesting to me. One of the things that perplexed me in the definition was, so, you know, in the ADA, it defines the person with a disability as one who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activity. And then what I found interesting is it goes on to say that this includes people who have a record of such an impairment, even if they do not currently have a disability. I don't understand that. Can you explain that to me? What, what that means?
I'll jump in on that one. So for example, what, one of the things that the ADA was meant to do was to protect people from, I guess, stereotypes and perceptions of somebody's abilities. So for example, we're not going to hire you because we see from your medical history you've had cancer and you might raise our, our insurance premiums if we hired you. So, we're not going to hire you because you had cancer. Or we're not going to hire you because you had a drug addiction in the past, even though you've recovered from that now. So the ADA was intended to protect people from those kinds of things. Even, you know, history of having heart disease or something to that effect. A lot of those things can come back. They can, you know, be in remission at some point and reappear at a later point in time. I had a colleague for a number of years, she passed away since then, who had MS. And on good days, Sandy could walk with a cane. On bad days, she could hardly get around in a wheelchair. So, you know, her history of having a disability protected her from discrimination. That's, that's kind of what that history of is about. The third prong, which is the perception of somebody having a disability even though they may not functionally be limited at all. At one point in time in our country, there were a lot of places that had laws that forbade people with certain disfigurements from even showing up in public. And being discriminated against just because of their appearance. Those kinds of things, I, I hope we're past that, that that's not something that, that happens anymore. But that's, essentially the ADA was intended to keep people with disabilities from being pushed out of or prevented from being in the public sphere.
And in, in looking at this definition, so there was a, a video attached, there were several, and I looked at this one video that absolutely changed my mind in terms of perspective. Now, this is from someone who taught special education and took disability training, okay? I found it extremely interesting that what they said was, is that half of all Americans who are aging will have a disability as a result of chronic disease. And I thought that was extremely important. So, a lot of our citizens today, even those who are in their 50s, 60s, who have chronic disease, are going to wind up with disabilities later on in their life. That, we know that. So I think that is a critical piece of information that I think that we really have to look at as we look at our aging population. And from that standpoint, I, I am definitely in favor, especially as I look at, at that inventory of buildings that have been recently built, that we are going back on now and having to change things because they're not in compliance. I think it would be very, very vital that we have someone in a full-time position. And I think that a good relationship on this is to their, our sustainability coordinator. Because we used to have the same thing, we used to have a full-time sustainability coordinator. It branched into many different other, you know, positions and responsibilities and the whole focus went away in, from the standpoint that, let me rephrase that, that's an exaggeration, not the whole focus. But the, the, a good portion of that focus went away when that full-time person went away and that dispersed into other positions. So, I think from that standpoint, I would absolutely be in favor of having a coordinator as a full-time person. Here, we are a large city and we have a lot of, we are one of the most aging cities of all the cities on the front range. And I think it would be very, very important to have that. So, thank you for the work that you've done.
Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you. I wanted to have a follow-up question for Mr., Mr. Wick. It seems like from this report that the vast majority of these ADA issues will be taken care of as we're doing capital improvement projects or other actions. And, and not, I, I worry I can't get the, get my arms around the concept of that we, we hire an ADA coordinator and then they have the power to start dictating, these are the issues we're going to take care of now and here's the funding source that we're going to do it. 215 or 225 million dollars in 20 years, 25 years is $10 million a year. That happens to be more than we spend on streets maintenance, just so you know. So we cannot go and start spending $10 million a year on exclusive ADA compliance. Not unless we're willing to stop doing other things. And I'm not sure what anybody would have as a prescription for what we stop so that we can start doing $10 million of something else. So it seems like to me that the way this really happens is that as we're doing a streets project like Ralston Road or 72nd Avenue, that we, we do it in an ADA fashion. And, and if that's the case, that we, as we do that, it doesn't seem like it's so important that we have one person who's an ADA coordinator who tries to coordinate that in the program. But, but the ADA compliance is baked into our professional staff or our way of, of doing stuff. I don't want anybody to mistake my questioning an ADA coordinator for me saying I think we shouldn't be ADA compliant. I think we should and I think we should work towards it. But I think it's a matter of what's the best way to get there. And I worry about if we're going to put an employee in place at however much per year an employee all-in costs, but yet we don't have hundreds of thousands, a million, 5 million, 10 million a year for them to budget towards accomplishing ADA compliance, that how effective are they really? I mean, there's always things you can do, but how effective is that effort? What are, what are you accomplishing with that effort? And instead I look at, you know, the team we have here is incredibly talented and professional and, and proud of the work they do. And that an, an alternative way of going about this is to bake ADA compliance within the organization. So not centralize it with a person, but, 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 but get it throughout. And so that when we do a planning process for 57th Avenue, that, that ADA compliance is part of it. And that when we do Ralston Road, ADA compliance is part of it. Can you comment on, on any of that? Or, or, or do you have really a, a recommendation for us?
Yes, so I, I get your point about, you know, the concern about one person kind of dictating everything and, and, and that would not be what my expectation would be. Rather what I see using really that we're coordinator is working with the three areas where we know we have the greatest compliant related issues. So public right-of-way, facilities and our, our parks and, and golf courses. So, yes, we are baking in ADA compliance when we do capital projects. What we also have are a lot of areas of the city, as Jeff and Dana mentioned, they, they didn't even evaluate, for example, the sidewalks that were less than 36 inches. What we have there is not only sidewalks that don't meet compliance, but then how would we go about actually doing the construction to make those ADA compliant? Either we acquire right-of-way to make them wide enough or we move into the existing street in order to, you know, gain that, or maybe there is some other alternative available that we're not aware of. Then we also are looking for somebody that's got the knowledge, skill and expertise and understanding the, the complexity of the ADA law and how that's applicable. And then someone who is also staying up on the changing of the law as it takes place. With the transition plan, it's a living document, so it's nothing that is static. So what we are seeing today, I would actually expect it to look different in a year, not a, a year from now. Not only as we do CIP-related projects where we improve ADA, but also as we accomplish things off the list, that our priorities are changing so that we can actually, you know, get things accomplished. The one thing I would tell you about the position, and it's already something I've been working on, is that I haven't made a request for new money. What I am actually looking at now is how could I potentially use positions that we have in the city that would be able to be reorganized in a way that would allow the ADA coordinator position to function? Brian Archer and I have actually had a recent conversation about could this be a function that our risk management staff could take on? And by way of example, I'm looking at a vacancy that I have in my department as to whether or not I could repurpose that position to fulfill this function. So we're exploring a number of options besides just coming to the council with a new position.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I appreciate that very much. That's kind of, I think along the lines of what I was looking for is how do we avoid additional expenditures that aren't in curing ADA problems?
Right.
And, and use the resources we have for the, for the coordination part. You know, I don't, I don't want us to not do this, but, but use the resources we currently have so that we can use any money we can put to it to actually doing things like taking that AED out of the hall and lowering the sign on the wall and, and, you know, doing those things that actually make us comply, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, but Councilmember Pfeiffer has questions.
Are you sure?
Go ahead.
You should go last anyways, right? So I, I just want to help my, my peer here because I've, I have a deepened appreciation through what you're going through. And maybe I can highlight the importance of it. When you, I think of 72nd and Wadsworth. If you remember, the push button to cross the road was too far out of reach, I was sent me to a wheelchair. You remember, the city didn't get in trouble for that. My employer got in trouble for that, CDOT. And, and different factors happen around that. You put it over there, but somebody else came back and did the sidewalk, which maybe prohibited the person to be able to reach it. So now they had to put extensions out to get it further out. Why, you know, when, when Mr. Marriott asks, well, why doesn't everyone just think about that? Well, everyone's not a jack-of-all-trades. So, the process in which something like that gets implemented, the person doing the curb cut in the sidewalk in the road is different than the person putting up the mast of the traffic light and, and the crossings. Those are different engineering groups, those are different processes, there's different clearances that they have to go through. It's just like at CDOT, there's clearances for technology, there's clearances for environmentals, there's clearances for, you know, pretty much almost everything. And you, you need to have, the, the reason why is because your brain is not big enough to remember every little thing. Like my civil engineers, they're looking exactly at that. Can the mast hold the weight? Is it close enough? Is it going to be hit by cars? Is it going to kill somebody? There's all these things they have to think through before they even think of putting up a, a traffic light. So, so I think having somebody like that is an expert around ADA provides that ex- provides that extra check and that extra thinking, like, "Did you think about moving that closer? Did you think about your sidewalk being right there?" Because when you're putting in a big project on one engineer, maybe two engineers, it's just it'll be, it could be missed. And I think it's just the way you implement the projects. We could use some education on that to understand why that extra set of eyes through your view process will be beneficial to us all.
Yes, I agree with that. And it's the training aspect for the engineers is something that we also pay a lot of attention to. For example, our traffic engineers, because they look at signalized intersection rebuilds, constantly looking at that ADA-related issue of are the push buttons closed or the ramps compliant, you know, all of those. But that took time to get them to that point. And actually...
It takes getting into the news because somebody was crossing Wadsworth against the light in their wheelchair because they couldn't reach the button. I mean, unfortunately, we have to get somebody almost life in danger for us to all say, "Oh, we better pay attention to that now."
Right. And, you know, engineering standards are also evolving as well. For example, we are going through an engineering standard update. And, you know, our intention is to make sure that all of our engineering standards are ADA compliant. But that book is, you know, that thick. And having somebody with that ADA expertise that can go through there and actually study that and make sure that those standards are correct as we update them is really an important thing.
Thank you. All right, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
So this subject is near and dear to my heart, and I'm so excited that we're doing this. Like, seriously, so excited. You know, the American Disabilities Act was founded in nineteen ninety, passed in nineteen ninety. So thirty-one years later, we're putting a plan in place. I'm kind of sad that it took so long. However, I'm very excited that we're doing it. But I did a bunch of research because I couldn't figure out how we could get away with being out of compliance for so long. And so the only thing I could find, ADA had a website that said, "Cities and governments thought that they were grandfathered, and then they found out that they weren't." And so my question is, first of all, much like Councilmember Jones said earlier, that what if twenty years is too long? And two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, two-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars right now, today, if we did all the work, twenty years from now, that's more like three-hundred thousand. I'm wondering if any of the American Relief Plan Act funds can go towards this in the creation of jobs?
Maybe.
I think we have to see what the guidance says. I think the infrastructure bill could also be another potential source.
Absolutely.
I think from what we're seeing right now with the American Rescue Plan is that they are talking about, there is a lot of funding that's directed towards infrastructure, but they seem to be singling water, wastewater, sewer, those kinds... That kind of infrastructure is sort of the priority right now. So I think we have some work to do to determine that. But I also think the infrastructure bill could be part of the solution as well.
Perfect.
And Mr. Devon would tell you that I ask him that pretty regularly.
I've asked him that twice in the last week. And he did tell me. I don't know how, the rules yet, but I will figure it out.
May I jump in?
Please do. Yes, please.
We have found in other states that oftentimes communities that have a transition plan in place get to the top of the list for funding. So the fact that you all have done this could be beneficial as these dollars do come out. And you may be tapped for dollars sooner than a community that doesn't even, hasn't even done their transition plan. You have projects now that you know you need to do. So I think it'd be very wise to look into using these dollars for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And I also would support a, you know, language on a ballot for sales tax increase for this. And I think our citizens would support it. Of course, I'd put that to vote. Why do you laugh at everything that I say? All right. So the other thing that I didn't see in the plan, and this question is for you, Ms. Barton, is I didn't see... So before COVID, my husband and I take our friend Ben out to dinner every Thursday, and he is in a wheelchair. And I have to push him sometimes. I need a two-hundred-pound man in a wheelchair, and it is very hard on some of our sidewalks. And I'm sad to say that I have lost him twice. Runaway wheelchair. It was horrible. But what I didn't see at all in your plan, and I read through, was anything about wheelchair van access. There was nothing in there, and I just don't see that very much around Arvada, is parking for unloading a wheelchair on the side of a van.
So that would be in the data that was given. Our teams went out and measured every parking space. And the width of a parking space for a van, van-accessible versus just a car, is different. You're able to kind of divide that up in different ways, whether you're using the access aisle for part of that as well. One of the comments that your, one of your citizens gave was education to the public about what those access aisles need to look like. Probably a good idea to reach out to local striping companies to educate them on how to properly stripe a parking lot. Our parking lot where our office is was restriped recently, in the last couple of years. And our teams went out, and wouldn't you know, they restiped it incorrectly. And I had my team members arguing with the striping guys who said they knew what to do. And we're like, "Well, we really do know what to do on that." So there is a formula for van-accessible spots. And so that would have been put into the data that you were given in terms of how to restripe and resurface parking lots.
Can I interject one thing here? One of the things that's required in pro ag, it's not in the ADA standards, but there is scoping that says for every twenty-five marked spaces on the perimeter of a block, there should be one accessible street parking space. We look at the spaces that are there and note whether or not they're compliant. But it's really difficult. It's sort of a separate study to try and go through your downtown area, for example, and figure out how many marked or metered spaces you have, and then calculate the number of accessible spaces that there should be. But I can almost guarantee there's not enough of those street spaces as there should be.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights lit up. Councilmember Ford, do you have anything else?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. It was fantastic, and I appreciate the work that everybody has done on this. All right. Does anybody need a stretch break or want to move on to the next workshop? All right, we're going to take five minutes. All right, deputies. City manager Lori Gillis. Let's talk trash. That is all I talk lately. Okay. So the first part of this is going to go rather quickly. I like to provide those base slides. I want to start out by saying that the core waste hauling team is here. So Emily Grog's on the phone, Madeline Stevens, Nancy Allen. Jason's here with me tonight. I'm forgetting Rachel Krowe was here as well. I think I got them all. Okay, so let's just jump in. Next slide, please. Always start out with the benefits of waste hauling. Just highlighting those top two because we get into a little bit meatier discussions later. We want to improve those recycling rates. That was a discussion on June fifteenth when this passed. And that is benefit of the organized waste hauling, decreasing truck traffic. I'm not going to read through all of them. You know what the benefits are. But we're going to talk about those in just a little bit. Next slide, please. As far as the milestones, you see them there. We are extending the date for cart selection to April twenty-fifth. That comes up again. It was originally set for April sixteenth. Next slide, please. Here you see the service levels. We've had a lot of conversations about those service levels. Rachel's going to talk to you about the call volume and what we're hearing. And you'll hear about the number of calls in a little bit as well. Next slide, please. Project implementation milestones. The only one that's really changed right now is the April twenty-fifth date. But you're going to see later, as we move the calendar along, that we're going to have those drop-off events later. And we're starting to make some decisions around that. At least getting to some point where we are going to get your input on some decisions. We have some recommendations. And with that, I'm going to hand off to Rachel. Next slide, please, to provide some communication updates.
For the last several weeks on the service level selection call to action. But I also want to take a moment after we talk about that to preview our next phase of communication and outreach, which will be how to use this new service. Next slide, please. I want to give a high-level overview of what we've been doing to make sure that we're really trying to reach all of our residents to let them know of this moment to make a choice. So we've had social media, press releases, Arvada Report, Arvada News, multiple mailings to eligible households, water bill inserts for each cycle. We have a video running on Channel Eight, our customer service line and email, and then our website. I'm highlighting a social media post from March thirty-first. It's one of our better-performing posts. A hundred and ten likes, fifty-one comments, twenty-one shares, and fifteen thousand impressions. So we're repeating our messages frequently across all of our channels. Next slide, please.
Hey, Rachel, can I jump in here?
Yeah, of course.
Just, I've had a couple of conversations with a few of our councilmembers regarding our approach and our communication plan. And as Rachel is presenting this tonight, I just want to highlight that it is very thoughtful. This is not haphazard. We have a timeline, and we go through that timeline. If we decide to shift a date, there's a reason why we're shifting that date. If we decide to add a communication, we are trying to be flexible and nimble to what we're hearing from our customers. So as we walk through this, you'll see that this marches through a timeline and a plan that Rachel's really diligent about reviewing and making sure we're impacting who that we intended to and what we're hearing back from our customer service lines. Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Lori. So this is one communication that does respond to conditions. We sent a reminder postcard recently to eligible households that hadn't made a selection as of March twenty-ninth. It's a very brief postcard. And so in the front, which is what you see, it's a reminder to select a service level, the service level choices. And then the back is very brief, tells you how to make a service level selection. We extended the deadline to April twenty-fifth to ensure that people had, we had time to mail the postcard, and people had an opportunity to respond and didn't feel a lot of pressure or they didn't arrive in their mailbox the day after the deadline. I also want to just draw your attention to the branding. We've shifted, based on your discussion with us, to have the City of Arvada logo bigger and more prominent. We've reduced the size of the Republic logo and added the language through a contract with to try to make that relationship more clear. Next slide, please. It's, we're not just communicating just from the city side. I'm also working with Republic to coordinate their communications to make sure that they meet our standards, are clear, and help our residents make the transition. So we, last week, worked with Republic's team to create a mailing that is, it's a Republic mailing to Republic current subscription customers. And it's to help them with their transition, to understand when their subscription service will start and when their carts will be removed. It does mention that there's no charge for that removal and that there will be no subscription service after June thirtieth. So the branding's a little bit more equal because this really is supposed to be a Republic-led communication with their current customers. But we're staying on message with what we want our residents to know. Next slide, please. To preview where we're going in the, like, starting mostly in May, we'll start talking about carts coming and how to use the service. So this is my kind of schedule of when we'll do different mailings, different outreach pieces. We have a lot of materials in this phase. I'll show you a few in a moment from our grant partner, the Recycling Partnership. So they have a package of educational materials that are based on their research and best practices that we will use to assist our residents. We are doing a pull-out feature for June-July Arvada Report to really assist our residents in having things in hand to learn how to use the service. The cart packet, water bill inserts. We are hopeful that we can have community events such as Meet the Drivers and things like that that have been well-received in other communities. We'll do continuous social media, Channel Eight slides, and our hotline and email as well. So as we move into the next slide, please, I want to show you a couple of communication pieces that will be going to residents soon. On the left is the in-mold label that will be printed on the top of all of our recycling cart lids. This helps people understand what is acceptable recyclable materials. And underneath... This helps people understand what is acceptable recyclable materials, and underneath what are not, is not acceptable in your recycling cart, and then brief contact information for the city. It is not co-branded, this is all about the City of Arvada. These are our carts, our program, and our educational materials. This "In Mold" label is based on materials from the Recycling Partnership that we call the info card. The info card is available right now on recycling.arvada.org. It will be included in the cart packet to all of the households. It's going to be on the next water bill stuffer. So we're really trying to make sure that people are seeing consistent information, they're getting that education about how to recycle properly, and there's, I would say no confusion, but reducing opportunities for confusion because it's consistent, you're going to see it probably a couple of times, hopefully. We also have these materials available, they have been translated, they're not yet posted online, into Spanish, Russian, and Korean, so that we can support residents who don't speak English as a first language. The communication on the right is a "Carts Are Coming" postcard. This will be another mailing that will go to all households who have selected cart service, and that's in May, to let them know to look for their carts. So really building that momentum and energy around the rollout of the program. Next slide, please.
So back to me, and we're on to some numbers. Next slide, please. As a reminder, there were nine haulers in 2020, nine have licensed. They will be receiving a reminder letter in June. That's to remind them of the changes in the ordinance and expectations related to reporting so they start collecting the data as soon as this program goes into effect. That will be new for them, and they too will be learning, city will be learning as far as how we're going to report efficiently and effectively on our recycling numbers. Fortunately, our work with Republic has demonstrated that they've been there, done that, and they have a lot of options for us. They have a lot of preset reports, so we're in the process of looking at those and seeing what information might be useful and if there's anything missing. Next slide, please. Want to give you an update on calls and emails and social media and the information that we've been receiving. Next slide, please. As you have heard and seen in the weekly memo, call volume is up and it's booming, and that's a good thing because that means that we're reaching our citizens. It's challenging in some of the things we're hearing back from our citizens, but we're making sure that we're being responsive, providing them the information that they need. And the team, this is Jason's team and others, have jumped on board, so we have about 18 city team members on the phones. They rotate in and out, but they're knocking it out of the park as far as response times and turnaround times. And then for the elevated calls, they head to Jason and Debbie Baumgartner first, she's also on our core team, and then they ship them to Mark and I when they need a little bit of de-escalation. But you can see the numbers there as far as total calls, that's from March 11th to April 8th. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question on that slide?
Sure.
So it's a pretty high abandoned rate in 33 seconds. Do we know why they're jumping in 33 seconds on average?
Jason?
Yes, some calls have been repeat calls, but not very many, but most of the time they just want to talk to somebody right away, so they hang up.
So is there, is there like a message, so when they, when they call the number, I've not called the number, when they call the number, are they getting a prerecorded message that's giving them information along the way so they maybe had their answer to their question answered prior to getting to somebody, or is it just a "please hold for the next available agent"?
Today it is that. We are working on switching that over to a call tree, to where we can kind of train, forward the calls off to different groups of people for specific answers.
Yeah, because I mean, it seems like, one, that's a high abandoned rate, at least in the call center world, and on 3,500 calls, and they're hanging around for 30 seconds. And so what is it that's, I don't know, it's hard to get that information.
That is true, and I will also say though, when we were talking about abandoned rate and looking at the call center when we had originally shifted to Republic, our abandoned rate, 6% was actually pretty good. So I know that you have experience with a call center. We are not a call center.
Right.
So we're working on it. We believe the call tree that's coming into play will help because we're putting in that prerecorded message.
Yeah, because that's, again, you can utilize, and then when you see those calls dropping, you know probably that it's, they've had a question answered, which is, you know, hopefully you can put that in place. I'm impressed that you're actually capturing the abandoned rate, so that, it's good to know. So I mean, it's good information, so keep doing it, but hopefully you can get the call tree in place to begin answering questions along the way.
Yep. Did you have something to add, Jason? Looked like you.
I was just going to say that we do the round robin through the seven to nine people that are always on, so that's what sometimes takes a few seconds, so.
Sure, on the next, so that, this slide right, you're seeing right here is just 75/75 extension, which is all waste hauling. Also wanted to go to the next slide. We have other lines that relate to utility billing and other city central lines, so just wanted to reflect the total number of calls coming into the city. So again, stating we're not a call center, but we're doing a pretty darn good job, and I can tell you, I can walk down to Jason's office any time during the day and he has up the tool, we're using BrightMetrix, and he's monitoring that. So if we need to pull in more people, or it's at a point where people can take a break, or if it's at a point where people need to take a break, we're doing that. So he's doing a great job managing the phones. Are you good, Jason? Okay. Next slide, please. So again, still many of the same questions that you've been hearing before as far as how's this program going to work for me, what does it mean for me, how do I make my selection, and pretty even themes throughout as far as these questions and our ability to respond. We are meeting every morning. We have a core team meeting from 8:00 to 8:00, no, 7:45 to 8:00, and then a customer service team meeting from 8:00 to 8:15, and we huddle if there's questions, if we're missing something, if there's help needed, if there's a frequently asked question, we jump on board to add that. We also have a chat going all day, and we're all on that, so when questions come up, they even let me join so that we can be responsive if things come up and get questions answered. So it's good to watch and keep a pulse on the system. Next slide, please. So you'll probably remember our elevated rate before was about 20%. This is not scientific, this is kind of watching our logs and where we're at, and we're about, it's a little bit higher now. We had it elevate again when we sent out our reminder postcards because there were folks that received a card that had already selected, and those calls got elevated. That was situational. We did trim out the folks that had already selected, but there was a couple of days there where they were selecting and we were creating the cards. Certainly not perfect, but some of the information, you can read it as far as what's going on. Probably the hottest item that I've received is and continues to be the 513, and we know that. Also, folks want to be able to verify their selections, and we are working on a map that's going to make it much easier for people over time, but we're just not quite there yet. We're really close, probably the end of this week, right, Jason? So people will be able to check on their own. So let's go to the next slide. When we talk about cart orders and where we're at, you've been receiving updated information related to selections and what we're seeing from people. Next slide, please. Cards went out, and there was about 26,500. We're a little bit over that now because we have found more addresses that pop in related to units and certain areas, but we're at about 26,500. As of, when I put this slide together, we are at 30% selection. As of today, we're at about 41%. Split is still going in those two, the bottom two rows. At the time of this, it was about 57/43, and I think we're at about 56/44 as of today. Trailing right along with what we heard when we were doing the surveys, about 60/40, and that 40% is the number opting out, taking that minimum service fee, and then selections one, two, and three. What we do believe and we have heard from the Republic and Schaefer, that Schaefer's a card provider, people that want to have an opinion and express it and want to opt out, they're going to call in first, not expecting those percentages to carry all the way through to the end. Normally you look and say, oh, about 30%, the trend will continue. Their experience has been that folks that want to make that opt-out selection are going to come in first. So we'll be monitoring that. Not easy, not a given, no playbook.
Lori, can I ask you a question real quick? And it would seem to me that one of the things that's important here is to get people to make their selections before carts go out, because it's a far easier problem to solve when you don't have two big plastic totes to go pick back up or move around or exchange or anything like that. And one of the pieces of data that might be really important, and I don't know if they would share it, but have we checked with the nine haulers who are going to continue operating in the city and just see how many contracted addresses they have? I mean, I think it would be reasonable to assume that those people are all going to opt out if they're going to stay with, you know, if they're not going to make a selection in the city program, they're going to stay with that hauler, which would give you a target for how many, you know, how many more people. I mean, I worry about just making the assumption that, well, we've got 40% of the people have decided, and the rest of the people haven't responded, so they're just by default opting in, that I can't, you know, some percentage of them, certainly that's the case, but certainly not all of them. Is there any other strategies for trying to figure out, out of that group that hasn't responded or maybe won't respond, what their choices are?
We haven't had a lot of luck getting information from the other haulers, and even writing letters inviting them to come in and help coordinate with cart pickup, whichever way they might be transitioning. Not a lot of success there, not due to lack of effort. I could name names and that one serve any purpose, but we're making our efforts that we can. That is not information that I believe they're going to share.
Okay.
I will tell you that, you know, of course, Republic, they will be transferring over somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000 to 3,000 customers that are not in this, generally not in this information yet. So that's the outreach that Rachel spoke about with the cart. So ideally, we'd all come together and have a plan, and that is not how it's working.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Next slide, please. And we will continue to provide you that information. We have two more weeks, and so we're tracking it closely, working with Schaefer, but we'll keep you up to speed as far as the information that we're receiving. And please know there's strategies, and Councilmember Marriott and I spoke a little bit earlier today, much like it's a concern as far as the easier to know which carts to set out and have that cart selection made versus picking them up, it's a concern of ours as well. It's, we're not poo-pooing it, it's something we're watching. So again, pre-deployment is going to start in June, and we will have to make our selections and our estimates to work with Schaefer to do that final order, and the core team will be working on that, not at a point to make those assumptions yet until we get some more information. And we do have to have that to them by May 3rd, so we'll be back to you, talking to you about the assumptions that we're using to make in our recommendation there. Next slide, please. So a couple of areas that we want to talk about tonight, and these are the more meaty slides that I was talking about, was the recycling carts and the drop-off events. Let's go to the first one, which is recycling carts. I've had conversations with many of you about, next slide, please, about what we're going to do with recycling carts and what if we have a resident, oh, and we do have a resident or two or three or more, asking, what if I want a smaller recycling cart? What if I don't want a recycling cart? I want to be in the program, but I don't want to recycle. And as a reminder, our goal, one of the goals of the program that you directed is to reduce those recycling rates. So we're working to establish parameters around decisions as far as those dropping off recycling carts, and what we've come to with the recommendation is, because the program goal is to increase recycling rates, we will drop off a 95-gallon recycling cart at everybody who selects, at every residence who selects service level one, two, or three. Of course, as we move into the program, there will be other areas that we're going to have to talk. There may be a garage that can't have two recycling carts, that may have room for two 35 waste and recycling, and we're going to work with those folks, but as we're rolling out the program, to keep it simple, to ensure that we're working to increase those recycling rates, to have a time to inform and educate our residents, we are planning to drop off a recycling cart along with every other service level selection. Challenges, again, are about if there's not space, if I'm saying I'm not going to recycle, what are the other licensed haulers going to do? Had a conversation today about, well, are the other licensed haulers going to provide those carts? Many residents provide their own carts with different haulers. We're navigating a new area, but at this time, our recommendation is to provide those recycling carts at the time of drop-off and manage on a case-by-case basis with those residents who are asking for something different. Councilmember Marriott.
Yep. Ms. Gillis, you just mentioned something about there are some haulers where residents provide their own carts, and of course, this program provides carts to people. Is that allowed under this program, under our ordinance with the city? It's allowed that a hauler can just provide the waste and recycling hauling without providing the cart to do it in?
The ordinance reads, and Ms. Grog will jump in if I'm off, but the ordinance reads, they will provide recycling services. Would you like to jump in?
You are absolutely correct. We do not, in our ordinance, regulate how the recycling and waste hauling services are provided, so if a hauler chose to pick up bags or containers that a household provided themselves, our ordinance doesn't prohibit that, but it does require that the recycling is part of their services.
Okay, got it. So they are allowed to operate and have customers supply their own recycling bins? They're not required to provide recycling bins? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Mr. Marriott's point, my thought on that would be that if they provide the trash bin, they provide the recycling bin. If they don't provide the trash bin, then they don't provide the recycling bin. Not that we're going to give you your trash bin, but you have to provide your own recycling bin as sort of a workaround. That seems like the logical sort of solution there for me. And then actually, I was going to, the reason why I originally pushed my button is I wanted to sort of change or ask a different question, sort of online with the recycling carts, but just in terms of cart removals, I've had numerous seniors contact me about the valet service and wanting to make sure that they get opted into that. Do they just call the customer service line at this time? Are we already operating that list? Will we have a mailer go out to those that are opting into the service that say, you know, if you're a disabled resident, if you're a senior, you're eligible for this service? I'm just curious myself about what information do I give them to ensure that they are able to sign up for the valet service?
When we started down the program, we preferred that they called the Republic at the time of implementation after July, but we have started a list because people are very anxious to be able to request that information. So we have a special request list that we're going to transition to Republic at the right time, so they'll have the information.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Next slide, please. We're still working on our drop-off and bulky item drop-off and yard debris drop-off events, but we're getting closer. What we have decided to do with the yard debris drop-off events is we are going to have Sandra McDonald run that program as she has run it in the past. We have an area where we can provide certainty and where there's been success. It's not on the slide, but that program is targeted now for the first three weekends in November, which would be November 6th, 13th, and 20th, which we will put out there and publicize in our future communications. As far as the bulky item drop-off events, we are doing a tour tomorrow to work on deciding those sites. We're working with Republic and our team, all of our department teams that will be working on that. It's not a simple decision. We are going to have to have traffic control plans. The worst thing we could do would be to, you know, stop Wadsworth. It's really not a funny joke, but we're paying attention to that, and we'll be planning for the event, knowing that we have, it's going to be a challenge. We will have an east and west event, which we have promised from the get-go. We're thinking we may have to have northeast, northwest, and southeast and southwest, just to accommodate the traffic, but we'll see what we determine on the traffic plans related to those events, likely in August and September. Councilmember Jones.
Just a quick question. Is the landfill an option for one of those locations?
Well, it's funny you ask. If we do anything at the landfill, that is a special negotiation that we'll have to have with Republic, but we're looking at that as one of maybe our potential safety net options. And another big challenge with the program that we're not prepared to work through at this time or talk through at this time is what are five bulky items?
Right. Because they know it's the landfill, the TV is not a large bulky item that they're going to take. So anyway, I was just, when you said east and west, I thought, well, I wonder if the landfill could be a potential location, because they've got obviously traffic flow taken care of.
And this is still extreme traffic flow when we were talking about, we've actually worked with Republic on other events that they've been at in other cities, and then also taken percentages related to tonnage and what it looks like and how we set it up. And at these sites, we're looking at having 20 roll- up. And at these sites, we're looking at having 20 roll-offs set up at each site, and then there's a transition period for a Republic driver to pick up and exchange during the day. So it's logistics we haven't fully worked through at this time.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm getting messages from my team, making sure I'm covering everything. Okay, next slide, please. So again, this just gives a little bit on the timeframe and where we're at, but we're getting closer on these decisions and recommendations, and we'll be bringing them back to council. But we hear you on paying attention to what this might be and what might look different, and we will bring that information back to you. Any other questions on that?
Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the yard debris and leaf drop-off. So I think one of the assumptions that I'd been assuming, and I'm guessing other people did too, is that you'd, because the city program, Republic, won't take bundled-up tree branches and things like that, are those acceptable at leaf drop-off events, or is that, where would those go? Is that only the spring yard debris that people could take tree branches at, or can they take them in the fall, or bulky item, or none?
Jason, do you...
For this year, the leaf recycling will be the only event that we have. The spring event is the tree debris and yard cleanup.
So there'll be one time a year, starting a year from now, where you could take a tree branch?
Correct.
Otherwise, otherwise you can't. And you can't put them in the carts, right? Doesn't the, in the city's program says you can't put yard waste in the carts?
Republic will take bundled-up tree, bundled-up tree branches.
Do you have to come and get a sticker and pay extra for them, or will they just take them?
No, I don't have that answer.
So I do. You have to call Republic at the, we'll have that, that'll be press-off number two on our 7575 extension, and then you will pay for that over the phone, and it's $3.50 a bundle.
Okay.
For as many as you want.
But you don't have to come get a sticker? You just have to...
You don't.
Let them know and...
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, while we discourage it, green waste is allowed in the trash bins, obviously not the recycling bins, but the trash bins, correct?
It is.
That's what I know.
Everything, grass clippings have to be in a bag, though.
Yes.
So.
Thank you.
And the questions you're asking this evening is part of the education that we'll be starting on, and Rachel has a plan for starting to push out those communications. And it is about educating our participants, our customers, into the program and what works and doesn't work. And then we'll have mistakes, and then we'll learn and what we need to communicate. Anything else?
So I just had one last question, and that's kind of the looking ahead to, you know, what happens next. What happens next is carts get dropped off to people based on their selections, and then carts get dropped off to people who we haven't heard from. And so I guess what I'd like to know is if a resident hasn't responded in any way, shape, or form, and in June, when carts show up in their driveway, they call the city and say, what the heck is this? I didn't know anything about this, and by the way, I don't want these. What happens then?
And that will happen, and we know that. That's, we're trying to safety net the communications. We will be working with Schaefer and Republic as far as timeline for picking those up. Republic was not planning to remove any of the carts until after the start of the program, which is July 5th, and then to manage any of that removal. And actually, they wanted to wait until the end of July, because we'll be navigating other carts with other haulers. We're still working on the logistics of that and how we cover that, because we do understand there will be people that say, I didn't know there was a trash program, and I'd get these carts out of here, and we will, we will work through that.
Right. So, but other than the timeframe involved of when they get dropped off versus when they might get picked up, the city's response will be, okay, you can choose the opt-out option and just leave those carts around, and we'll come get them eventually. It might be a while, but we'll come get them eventually. But they can opt out at that time with no penalty involved.
Yes.
They can. Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone? Okay. Next slide, please. Again, this one, this piece is still under construction as far as resident on carts, drop-off, and recycle. We, this is where our partnership with the other haulers in the city would be helpful, so that we can have a plan. We are currently working with one other hauler. We haven't heard from the other haulers. So we're trying to make sure the timing isn't such that residents are dropping off carts that they'll be charged for if they don't turn them back in. That will be part of our communications and education piece as well. Next slide, please. We've walked through all of this as far as what's going forward. I do want to also thank all of you for the calls that you're taking and shouldering as we go through this process, because as much as I talk about the city team and my concern, as far as the calls that they're receiving, I know that you are all fielding them as well. So if there's any way we can support you, we're happy to. If you'd like assistance in communication, so you can help get the word out, that would be appreciated as well.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
So, great update. A few things. So I've been getting actually a lot of positive communication, but unfortunately, some of those are from my neighbors, which are getting letters, and I'll explain why I say unfortunately. They're getting letters in their water bills saying that they need to pick their cart, and it doesn't mention anything in there that they're in a metro district or an HOA. It doesn't explain it at all. I haven't seen mine yet, but both neighbors came next door to me and said, hey, we're excited. Who do we call? What do we do? Where's the postcard? And I just got yelled at, because my wife told me I threw away the postcard, and I didn't do it. And I'm like, well, hold on. We're in a metro district. We've opted out. I don't know what you're, don't worry about it. But did we put those yellow pamphlets in all utility bills citywide?
Early on. And when did the last set go out, Jason?
Thursday. That's where you got all the phone volume, on Thursday and Fridays, when they got it. And that's why I think you had 450 phone calls, probably, is because an increase of people that thought that their HOA or metro district was, you know, I don't know, I'm curious what the resolution was on them. But I could tell you, both my neighbors came to me on Friday and asked about where their postcard is. And I told them, no, you're not, no postcard. We're opted out because of the HOA, the metro district. So I think that's going to add a layer of confusion. And I read theirs, doesn't say that, hey, there's a possibility if you're in an HOA or metro district, you could be opted out. So that could increase phone volume, so.
Well, that makes sense on the Thursday, Friday, because some of the phone volume Thursday, Friday was the reminder postcard hitting.
Yeah. And the utility bills hit.
I missed that part.
So, yeah, yeah, that's, so just heads up on that.
Thank you.
That added a whole layer. So I said it was unfortunate, because they were all excited, and they were ready to pick their carts. And I'm like, no, you don't get to pick carts, sorry.
Well, just to add to that, so our metro district sent out a message district-wide saying, don't respond.
Yeah. I think they need to on ours as well. So, or unless you have some organized communication you want to do around that, you know, we can always talk to our metro districts and have them communicate them.
We were grateful to see Councilmember Jones. I did see that from your metro district, and...
I don't think we did anything, because they're going through a whole transition, and they just let somebody go, the manager.
Okay.
So I'm sure that's part of the...
Yeah, we can check into that. That was a miss.
Okay. It was good news. But the phone calls I got, everyone was excited, and I'll tell my councilmembers, the email from Emma Buff is an employee of mine. She was so excited to come in my office to tell me that she selected a bin. She was so giddy, so giddy. I just told her, well, why don't you share that with city council? And she says, that's a thing? Like, she didn't know that she could write us. So...
I enjoyed her email. Thank you.
Yeah, I told her. And it was, it was, she, you know, the, I wish you all saw the impression when she came in the office, all giddy, versus what she put on email, because I mean, email was kind of just, it's the emails we get, but it's, it was how giddy she was about, about the whole program. But I did receive a half dozen other calls, and none negative. So my experience is a lot different. The other thing I want to point out, branding and what you're talking through here, I like how you're doing that. That's great. That's awesome. I feel that's more aligned.
Well, we appreciate the conversation with you, because, you know, you brought us along to what was making sense, too. Somebody stepped back from what we were doing. So you got to get some credit there, Bob.
Well, no. I mean, it's our program, it's our program, the community program. So I just want to make sure that. And then the other, what was I going to say? Oh, I was going to ask, now, I'm thinking of all the times that I've either did a contract with a company, or I was in an HOA, but I never knew that there was a choice that you could have a smaller than 96, 96 gallons. I don't, I'll tell you, Waste Management never offered it, and none of the others ever offered it to me. So I don't know if any of the other nine offers anything smaller. So I'm just, I'm a little perplexed with the conversation about the size of the cart, when all the other, all the other carriers just give you 96 gallons.
Well, as you'll remember, in a discussion about our default cart size, 95 is what is typical, typically provided by the other haulers. And so the smaller carts are new. So it's mostly in Arvada, we've only seen either the 95 or self-provided cans.
Yeah. So I mean, I almost think that some people, it depends on the communication, might just not say anything and let the default have it, because that's just what they're used to. I'm curious if there's a group that, like, for me, I'd be like, well, just deliver the cans. Let's get going. It's just trash. Get it out. I don't want it here. I don't care what it looks like or what, just get it off my property. I mean...
We believe that there are some that are saying, yeah, I want the default. I'm not responding. But it's hard to gauge what those will be. The other thing that we hope to see is, with the larger 95 recycling cart, you'll see our residents saving money, because they'll say, oh, this recycling cart, I can go to 64 or 35. Families will fill up, and they are adding carts. We have residents asking for additional recycling, additional waste. If you are a smaller family, you can go to that smaller trash. Once we do all the education and conversation, we believe that will happen.
Well, and that's exactly what my neighbor was talking about, because one thing he was starting to get excited about, well, he says he's going to keep the 90, thinking he had a choice. He was going to stay with the 95 because of his clippings that he was worried about. But he thought, you know, the older you get, I would go down, because it's only my wife and I, and like, my kids are leaving, and you can save a little money. So I'm sure over time, more will join in. The other thing I may comment around that I suspect will happen is, once July hits, people roll out their carts, and they say, Arvada on the side. They're all out one day. They're all picked up by the end of the day. Trash truck one time down the street. I suspect there'll be some other people like, well, me too, you know, I will want to experience that. So I'll be interested in any of that kind of statistics that come around in July.
We will have all the data. So we'll have the original master list, and then we'll see all those shifts to see what that looks like.
And the last thing, I mean, I'm not a current expert, like Mr. Jones is on the call center, but I'd love to share an experience. When I first became a manager at 19 years old, of a call center, it was a company called Prime Star. It was owned by TCI Cable. I was a manager, young manager. And my shift was, I think it was four to midnight. And every night I came in, and you have the telestrator up there, he knows what I'm talking about. You have the telestrator, and you see how many calls are in hold, how long they've been holding, how many agents are available. And it was three hours to talk to somebody in my call center. And I was the only manager. I was 19, running a crew of like 45 operators. The company was new. And so when I reflect, I'm like, wow, that's great. Now, our abandonment was like, they held for three hours and hung up, and that really sucks, because by the time they got ahold of us, it was horrible, horrible.
I can't imagine.
I'm sure he's cringing, because you wouldn't want whole times like that. But just, I was reflecting...
Unless we're paid by the minute.
Yeah, well...
If I'm paid by the minute, I'll wait all along.
Yeah, but back in the days, in their 90s, you paid $800. You paid everyone that held. So anyways, it was, I'm glad we're not having three-hour hold time, but I just wanted you to feel better that I think this is nothing compared to my young experience in a call center.
Well, and my comment didn't, I didn't intend it to be critical.
No.
It was just that I'm glad to hear that you're going to have another option for people to opt out in the call, because they could get something answered earlier. So that was really the point of it. And we take a lot more calls than, than, we take that many calls in a day. So...
Ouch. Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for your continued dedication and work on this project, all the team. I know you're doing a fantastic job. And Lori, thank you so much for being over it. I don't know if any of you saw this article. I just wanted to share this. This was a very small article in Sunday's Parade about Seattle, and talked about their situation. Of course, they're a much larger city. But I, what I found very interesting was the amount of time that it takes for change. And I want to encourage everyone, because they actually adopted, the city adopted, a mandatory recycling ordinance in 2003. And they have a program similar to ours that motivates, basically motivates people to throw out less trash. They made the determination as a city that when they saw 23% growth happening within 10 years, that they wanted to eliminate their trash. And it took them, it said 20 years, to move the needle from 40% recycling to 54% recycling. And that was because the city also offered leaf and grass clipping recycling, all for a cost. I looked on the website today. Food scraps, pizza delivery boxes that were turned into compost. They charge their residents for special services when they need. But I found it really interesting, because you can see how cities progress. You know, it takes time. It's a slow progression. They even, and you'll be happy with this, Mayor Protem, that as of January 1st, Seattle changed their practices to charging for paper bags, no longer have single-use plastic bags. They are now outlawed. So we're seeing over the country how cities are changing their practices. But again, I just want to encourage our citizens that we are on the right track here in Arvada. And one thing I like to say, that you never see a city going back to the system that we have today. So I think we should all take a lot of pride in that. So thanks again, and keep up with the good work.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Seattle is a wise city. Councilmember Simpson.
Thank you. So just going back to Deputy City Manager Gillis's comment about the families who are getting extra bins, I can confess, I'm one of them. We opted in for an extra recycling bin, and so, as well as the medium-sized cart, 1,863 a month for three bins, you guys. That's, that's great. And especially because my recycling bin fills up by the end of the week. So I'm really excited that I'm going to have two, so that I'm not bundling things up and waiting for the recycling to be hauled off, so that I can immediately refill my bin. This will help me personally, and I hope it helps a lot of other people, too. It's great. And so much, so much of what we have that can be recycled, all of our soda cans, all of our pizza boxes, unless they've got the food stuff on it, just so much. People would be surprised. So, but my real question, I just wanted to add that anecdote. Maybe, Jason, you can help with this, or Ben. So in terms of the social media conversation, obviously, it's ongoing and rampant. There's a new post every day on Nextdoor and on the Arvada Neighbors Facebook page. And that's fine. People want to have a great conversation for or against. They're allowed to debate it out, and that's their right, and that's a good thing. That's an element of a healthy society. But I do notice a lot of legitimate questions coming up that we should be responding to. Is there any way that the city can, like, see when people post a question, like, such as, will it have valet service for seniors? To make sure we're trying to capture those and answer those questions, because we don't want other citizens, who may or may not have agendas either way, answering those questions when they can be getting the real factual information from us.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Thank you. So just to remind everyone, on Nextdoor, we, the city cannot see resident posts, and we can't respond as the city. It's the way that Nextdoor is set up. They're very intentional about that. So we can only see our own posts and comments on our own posts, which we do try to answer those questions. So if someone's posting in their neighborhood group, we can't see that. People do share screenshots with us, and we try to take that into consideration when we are doing FAQs, or, you know, maybe doing a social media post on the topic. On our, the city's channels, so Facebook and Twitter, we do try to monitor the conversation and answer questions when we can, that are questions, or direct people to contact the city. That's been one of our talking points. Whenever we kind of get in front of residents on social media is, if you have questions, the city is your source of answers. Either call, email, or check the website. But we, you know, we just can't get in, we can't see those conversations on Nextdoor. So I encourage anyone who's a city team member who sees something, to just encourage your neighbors to call the city, because we can answer their question for them directly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The one, if I could add to that, the one thing that I've been seeing a little bit more, and I can't watch all this all the time. However, I am seeing the self-policing or self-informing or the jumping, and this weekend there was a conversation about the extension of the date and the concern about one thing says the 16th and one thing says the 25th, and the neighbors got in and said, "Well, actually, they extended the date. That's why they're different." So there is some of that going on. Also, members of our Sustainability Advisory Committee have been jumping in with facts when they see things that are, that they have information on. So aside from directing them to the city, there are communicators out there, and there's, I'm counting you, there's five of you, there's six with Nancy, that are doing some of that as well, so thank you.
I don't see anybody else with a button lit up, so Nancy, do you have anything else? All right. I think that ends that presentation then. Mr. Devon, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me.
All right. We're adjourned.